Again? Thank you. We have completed an executive session and move now to our regular meeting. I am looking for a motion from the council that results from our executive session before we go on because that may change our agenda for tonight. Is there a motion to change the agenda?
I move to add an item in front of item four on regular business regarding the property issue we discussed in executive session.
Second.
Okay. Moved in second, in all favor, saying the vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. Motion carries. So we will have an additional item before item four. We go first, then to special business, and it is a opportunity for us to...I just have to ask. This is our...what year are we talking about? This is for last year?
No, 2015.
2014.
You see, yeah, that's what I'm realizing. I was putting 15 and you've put 14 and...
Yes.
Okay. Well, our 2014 Citizen of the Year. Mercer Island City Council is pleased to name Roger and Nancy Page, owners of Island Books, as the 2014 Citizens of the Year. Island Books was already a beloved fixture in the community in 1984 when Roger Page came to work there as a part-time Christmas gift wrapper. The store had been started in 1973 by Lola Dean, a community activist, and in Roger's words, "a force of nature," who awoke one day and decided, "This town needs a bookstore." After a few years, Lola sold the store to three good friends, Marge Wilkins, Pham Bayless, and Eleanor McDonald, who were still the owners when Roger came around. He was looking for a career change and founded an Island Books. Intrigued by the business, Roger was soon promoted to bookseller and then to floor manager. By 1991, Roger and Nancy had married and were thinking about buying the home and starting a family, inspiring him to tell his three bosses that he needed to move up or move out. The ladies happily sold him the store, taking a Volkswagen bus, which was Nancy's, and a Honda Civic, which was Roger's, as collateral for the purchase of the loan for purchase of the bookstore. Roger took an already special institution and made it even more beloved and more of an integral part of the Mercer Island community. Roger and Nancy see their goal as to serve the community and believe that if they do it well and are welcoming and caring, the business will go on and everything will work out. Perhaps not the tightest business model, but it's clearly working. I asked Roger about events and fundraisers. Roger said he thinks of them as parties, and who doesn't like a party? And they range from exceedingly modest, a handful of people for a poetry reading, to exceedingly large, 2,000 midnight attendees for a Harry Potter release with the bookstore staff dressed as Dumbledore and Voldemort. And how impactful are they? A few years ago, the donation total was over $300,000 from the several hundred functions they had held over the years. I could go on about their connections with our community, but I think Roger can articulate it better than I can, and I would ask him to say a few words. So welcome. Please come on up, Roger. Nancy? And Nancy too. I should have said that. So, welcome.
Thank you. It's a great honor to be part of a group that includes the likes of Terry and Phil Flash, and we are truly humbled by this. I was thinking about our special sauce, what makes Island Books work, and yes, the relationship to the community is that when I started, we were selling macrame at Island Books, and we had index cards to run the store. But the chain stores were on their way. Walden Books was coming in, Bead Dalton was coming in, Tower Books was coming in, and they're all gone now, but they were a force at that time. And so we sort of thought that maybe we should up our game by becoming more of a service-oriented store, and we took on the Nordstrom model, and we started offering the free gift wrapping and greeting everybody and free shipping and things like that. And we beat off the charge of the big box stores of Barnes &amp; Noble where they're discounting, and Amazon came along, and we had to do just-in-time shipping and special orders and all that sort of thing. But I think we, along the way, we accidentally stumbled on the secret sauce of Island Books. And it happened partly one night. There was a blizzard. They closed I-90, and everybody on their way home just left their cars on I-90, and they started to walk, trudge through the snow to their homes, and they got about as far as the bookstore, and there at the bookstore was a warm, well-lit spot, and people were gathering around getting warm, and we said, "Well, let's get some food and some beer." And so we went to the QFC, and we got some food and some beer, and we had a party, and the party went late, I'll tell ya. There was some people who spent the night at the bookstore that night. And we ate off that party for months afterwards. And then we had a Harry Potter party, and it was just gonna be a book launch, and then music got a hold of it, and this and that happened, and then the whole store was being transformed, and then the parking lot was being transformed, and youth theater actors were involved, and things were being painted in my garage, and we would buy bags of some kind of wacko candy that we were relabeling as special Harry Potter candy and things like that. And by the time the night actually took place, I remember standing on top of a car, dressed as Dumbledore, at 12:30 at night, saying, "You people back there in the Rite Aid parking lot need to go home because we have no more room." And that was another party. We ate off of, for years, decades. And what I guess I'm saying is, what we found is that the more we gave, the community would always give back more to us. And that was our secret sauce, and that's been a great pleasure for us, is that as much as we make it a warm community place, you guys come and take care of us even more than we can possibly imagine. So it's been our luck to be there at the center of the hub, and we're very grateful for this honor. So, thanks.
Thank you. I mean to ask... I warned you, if you didn't go there, I was gonna force you to go there, but you, in talking to me, offered some inspirational words, I think, about the multigenerationalness and the longevity of the connections you've made with people. And so I'm gonna ask you to just take a moment to talk about that, too.
Well, it happens all the time.
The Playhouse, the little house.
The Playhouse, the book recommendations.
The thirty-year-olds.
Yeah.
The kids and they play in it when they were little.
Help us appreciate that.
The Playhouse has been there for 40 years, and there are good-looking, upstanding citizens who have houses on the water of Mercer Island who walk in with their stroller and their little three-year-old, and they say, "Johnny, I used to play in this house when I was little." You know, and you go, "This couldn't be true," but it is. And there are...both of us have a lot of experience with, starting off with a seven-year-old trying to buy a present for his or her parent, and 20 years later, that is a 27-year-old who's come back to the island from New York City where they have a big job, and they need to buy a present for their parent in the next hour because it's Christmas Eve, and I've done it for 20 years, and so can I help them now get the present for Dad?" You know, and so...and then it works the other way. There's the wonderful old folks of Mercer Island. There's...you know, fewer of them are around than there were 20 years ago, but they're an amazing group, the people who were here in the '50s and the '60s who still come in and still find refuge and comfort in the bookstore. So it's been fun for us to watch the generations flow through, and there's a new group coming, so it's been great, yeah.
I think you have some family here. You want to introduce them?
Yeah.
Well, some people, especially, you know, my daughter Emma, who often works in the bookstore, and there's my son Louis, who has also worked in the bookstore. He has grown to be 6'1" and different from the cute little child we used to have, ringing the bell for the Ballard Food Bank in front of the store, but they're here, and we're delighted to have them here.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm gonna ask council members. I think at least one or two of you had something you wanted to add to this, so Jane.
Well, I was in the bookstore today, kind of with my reporter hat, talking to Kay because I wanted to get some background intel about Roger and Nancy, and she was telling me stories, the one told of the stormy, snowy night when everybody hung out at the bookstore. She had me in tears, and so there I was, crying in the bookstore today, trying to sort of hide from Roger, and he comes around and he sees tears in my eyes, and I probably thinks I'm crazy because I was crying in the bookstore today. But anyway, there's so many stories like that. I think he has an uncanny ability to read people's minds. I have, for years, gone into the bookstore and not even told Roger I'm shopping for anybody. I'm just going around. I'll go to this department and that department and pick up this book and put it down, and pick up another and put it down, and he must be watching because he will come up with maybe three books in his hand and say, "You know, Bob would like these books." And he's right on because I was looking for something for Bob. So he's a mind reader. He has the knowledge of customers' reading habits over generations, as he said. And I also think my husband and I bought a little retro travel trailer a few years ago, and we're telling Roger about this purchase, and somehow I feel a bit to blame for the fact that he went out and bought a camper.
Alaskan.
It's, yes, an Alaskan camper. It's a truck with a camper on.
It's done. I got rid of it.
He loved it. He loved it. She didn't love it, and there was a funny smell in it that I think, over time, Nancy was afraid that it might explode, and they couldn't figure out where this funny, gassy smell. So it became a bit of a point of discord, I think, in the Page household, so it's gone, so I feel that I'm...we're off the hook now. But so many gatherings...see, I'm gonna cry now. So many good times in the bookstore. It's a gathering place. It's the heart of the community, and it reminds me of, like, Cheers, the place where everybody knows your name only without the alcohol. Congratulations.
Anyone else?
Can I, can I wait for just a second? If you ever get into the back room of Island Books...
It's a whiskey front.
You will see, there's just an array of whiskey and wine bottles there, usually left by book fair ladies, but over the years, over the years, the staff has been known to take a little nip at 6 o'clock because we weren't gonna get through the rest of the evening without a little fortitude, so.
Mike?
I think Roger and Nancy, one way or the other, have the opportunity to kind of see what I'm thinking about whenever I get my January book distribution for the council, as I do every year.
Right.
And of course, I always go to Roger, and Roger's always gracious enough to give me a little discount on that, so for that, I appreciate it. Get a little bit inside of what Mike's thinking.
Actually, I have to say, in contrast to Mike, when I come into the bookstore, it's usually because I don't want something that's gonna make me a better person, a better mother, a better council member. So maybe that says too much about me, but, you know, to me, what's interesting is it speaks so much more than any business model into the special sauce, is when I ask my kids, "Where do you want to go on Mercer Island?" You know, "If you can go anywhere, it's the bookstore. It's not Baskin Robbins. It's not Menchies." Yeah, they like the farmers market and playgrounds and stuff, but the first thing on their mind is, "Can we go to Island Books?" And then, "What's our limit?" Is the next question that comes out. So, you know, when you can get an eight- and a 10-year-old excited about going to a bookstore and just seeing what's on the shelf, you know, as a parent, as a resident, I just can't thank you enough, so I'm so pleased.
Dan?
So it's Roger and Nancy and my wife have a sort of special relationship because, as most people know, Claire's a children's book author, and she's been fortunate enough to have Roger and Nancy as supporters for all these years and have helped sell her books and done book launch parties, and it's not just obviously for Claire, but for so many local authors, that you've helped them advance their careers and gain some publicity for themselves, and that's really appreciated. But the other thing I want to mention, it always amazes me when I see articles in the reporter talk about the fundraising efforts that you're involved in, and that the proceeds from this are going to this school, or that class, or this club, or that cause, or whatever. And it's week after week after week that you make your store available for these causes, and, you know, I see so many other businesses on the island, which you don't get any sense that that kind of philanthropy is going on, and this...a store which is as small as Island Books in terms of the gross revenues can do so much for this community. I mean, I think it's fair to say more than any other business that I'm aware of on this island does time and again for this community, and I really appreciate it.
It feeds the store.
Yeah, and it feeds the store, but it keeps this community a community.
And both my kids have shoes. You'll see right now.
But thank you so much for having done that for this community.
Benson?
Just a correction, I think, Roger. You mentioned how lucky you were. I think it's quite clear from the statements being made how lucky we are to have both you guys here on the island, and frankly, as a human institution for us to sort of rely on, and my story doesn't...it pales in comparison to the blizzard that occurred, but not too long ago, we had the power outage on the town center, and, you know, my wife and I, we didn't have any lights, and so I trekked, looking around for places where I could...and luckily, you guys were open, and I was able to buy a scented candle, which we use periodically. I won't say for what, but we use that, but in any event...
For the smell or the light?
The alcohol. But in any event, it was good, it was nice that you guys were open and provided us some light for that evening.
Yeah, that's a great story.
Whenever you need a scented candle, that's fine.
We've got 'em.
Dirk?
I wasn't a part of the council when they made this decision, but I was thrilled with their selection, and I couldn't be happier to be here tonight to honor both of you, what you've created in our community. I have a little bit of knowledge of Roger's prior career because with my youngest child, whenever we went into the bookstore, he would find Roger, and Roger would take a stuffed animal and hide it. You may notice that some of the books are on desks, and those desks open up, and they have little hiding places and little drawers, and he would always hide that for my youngest, who would always remember when he came back that he should look for it, and it was always where it had last been hidden. What a wonderful gift to give to a really young child, to know that he lives in a friendly community and a community that cares about him. You have made that difference for every child who walks in your door, and every community needs a heart, and I think you've created that community for Mercer Island, and that's our heart. And I think everybody in this room probably has felt that when they've walked in there, they're a part of a community, and they leave feeling better about who they are, who you are, and who we are together. Thank you so much, and congratulations.
Thank you, Terry.
Thank you, Terry.
Please join me in applauding our Citizens of the Year. This comes not just with applause, but with glass. Yes, thank you both. It also comes with a ride and a parade, as I think you know, so we anticipate seeing you there. So, yes, thank you. Thank you.
Right here in all of this special session. One, two, three.
She's not just a reporter, she's a photographer too. All right. Here, you take that line with you, and thank you. All right. We move now to appearances. Moment when anyone may, who wishes to address the council, you have three minutes. Please begin by introducing yourself and giving your address.
Sorry.
Rules, the detailed rules of engagement are on the back wall, but they really bear down to just please be civil. So with that, we are open.
All right.
Welcome.
Thanks. I'm Jeff Becker, 3437, 74th Avenue, Southeast, 1 First Hill. I was here a couple weeks ago, talking about the same thing. I am a longtime Mercer Island resident, born and raised here, went to University of Washington, moved Fremont and back here, and as you can say, I'm obviously for the PCC movement. You know, I love PCC, the co-op model, the community model. I actually didn't realize how much of a community that sort of there was until those whole things happened, and I'm even more bought in based on what I've heard, local and fresh and, you know, yes, I'm for PCC, but there's the Met Market, and there's, you know, we talked about Island Books, and I think it's so important that we...they embrace everything that we're looking for here on the island, and as I've sort of talked to everyone over the past couple weeks, I mean, you've seen our Facebook group, you've seen the surveys, the feedback, I'm actually been overwhelmed by how much people care about the topic of the grocery store in general. Not everyone is obviously as passionate about the PCC as I am, but so many people are, and so many people care so much about this topic, and I think that we should make sure we're making a decision that's right for the community rather than rushing. I know everyone's nervous about what has happened and what could happen, but this decision of this magnitude is incredibly important. I heard a couple weeks ago that we don't want to get involved, and I'm also, like, terribly for free business also, and deals can be made how they want, and I just know that a decision like this that could last for 20, 30, 40, 50 years, when we know the size of the market, it matters to the community so tremendously much that I want to make sure that PCC or Met Market or whoever hasn't had no chance to come to the table and at least make an offer, and that I think we just need to make sure that we don't just let a deal happen where we haven't thought about it. And the fact is, is if more people come to the table, it actually makes the whole offer more competitive, and even the investors could do better. And, you know, I don't, I obviously don't know the ins and outs, and maybe this all happened already, but I just hope that the investment group looks at this whole thing, takes everything into consideration, and you just think about how much it matters to the community, because it matters so much more than I ever thought it did. I mean, community, it's the first word in their phrase. Community's so important to Mercer Island, and as we're talking about what to do with downtown and how much it matters to each of you and everyone on the island, this is just, could be a cornerstone of amazingness, and for our island, I just, it's so important for my family, for our friends, and for everyone around us, so thanks.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Craig Reynolds, 8105, Southeast 48th Street on Mercer Island. Surprised for my shirt, I'm gonna be talking about PCC a little bit as well. There are probably 100 reasons that I could list why this is an important topic to me, but one that I want to focus on is something that distinguishes PCC from some of the other alternatives that have been mentioned for the Albertson site, and that is that it's a co-op. And a co-op is something that really matters to me. Now, when we've been talking to people about this issue, we've discovered many people don't really know what a co-op is and why it matters. And I'm gonna start with just a brief quote from a Forbes magazine article. It says, "A co-op is a democratically-run business whose members are also its owners. There are some 29,000 of them in all sectors of the American economy. They have revenues that exceed $3 trillion and employ 856,000 people. Household names among them include Ace Hardware, Ocean Spray, The Associated Press, and Sunkist." Now, some of the largest and most successful businesses in the country out there are co-ops. PCC is a dramatic example of a local business that has employed that co-op model very effectively, and it exists to serve their members. And there are lots of other co-ops that we're familiar with. There are utility co-ops, there are farm co-ops, and probably the biggest, most successful example in my mind of a good co-op is the credit union model. And if you look at the credit unions and think back to what happened in 2008, we saw, you know, big banks who had one objective. Their objective was to take money and take risks and make money, and we saw the consequences of that. They largely almost brought our economy down to the toilet. And co-ops are uniquely different. They exist to serve their members, and that's their only goal, not just to maximize profit, whatever the risk. Credit unions didn't need government bailouts when that situation happened. That's because of the co-op model. They were doing the boring business of serving the local communities and serving the members. PCC does that very, very well. They're serving the market in which they operate. Co-ops, shareholder-owned corporations exist with one goal in mind, to maximize shareholder value. Co-ops will exist to serve their members, and in this case, that means providing healthy, wholesome, locally grown food, often organic food, food that is good for the community. And people that believe in food as something more than just, you know, it's something that matters in and of itself should be able to get behind and value this co-op model that PCC has. When you contrast that with other grocery stores out there, some of the other grocery stores say they're committed to organic, say they're committed to local, say they're committed to many of the things that PCC is committed to, but at the end of the day, what we know they're really committed to is their shareholders. And if their shareholders tomorrow tell them, "You can make more money by selling food Walmart-style, imported from their lowest bidder, grown with the most horrible working conditions, employed with nonmilitary labor," that's what they're gonna do. PCC has values that we share and we believe in, toward good wholesome food, employing people with... people with fair, buying from fair trade operations and employing union labor, and I'd love to see that continue. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi there. Steve Williamson, I'm the Director of Community Affairs at UFCW 21. I live at 3826 South Lucille Street in Seattle. So we haven't met face-to-face before. I'm confident you know our union by our faces. UFCW 21, or United Food and Commercial Workers, is the largest private sector union in Washington State with over 45,000 members in the grocery industry, other retail, so think Macy's, Bartel, Rite Aid, Filson's, et cetera, healthcare, and other industries. We're a union of workers who serve the public. Ninety-one of these 45,000 members call Mercer Island their home. Sixty-one of these work in the two QFCs and the Albertsons is closing. And the island's grocery needs for many years, they've been serving you. Nineteen of these, sixty-one folks, have been working at the Albertsons itself. Our message is simple. Our members would like to continue serving you in the same location because for us, the banner over top of the store is not so relevant as long as our members enjoy the same quality, wage, and benefit package and keep you as their customers. That's where retail workers want to serve and be in relationship with their customers and be treated fairly. We know that store closures can be complicated and upsetting for communities, and over the years, we have developed some tools that we believe unite our values of stability, strong communities, and economic growth that we all grow up together. One of these tools is called a worker retention policy that city councils can pass. It's very simple. It can be narrowly targeted. It simply requires that a new business operator retain the existing workforce for a given period of time. This ensures that folks who have organized their families' lives around working there are not disrupted. And while the shopping relationship is not maybe as intimate as a bookstore, a shopping for your food, family's food, is a pretty trusting relationship. Specifically for Mercer Island, it means that your comp plan goals about promoting walking, cycling, and busting to and from work are enhanced. While this policy may be new to you, I can tell you, it is proven legally here in Washington State, and because it's based on shared or high-grade values, it's viewed as a problem-solving tactic that keeps the playing field level. Business deals are business deals, as they always have been, but with one bit of transparency added. They just have to keep the existing workforce in place. Any high-grade operator would welcome this. It's not unlike legislation that designates a particular parking requirement or contribution to municipal parks or design standards. The underpinning is that everyone plays by the same transparent rules because they're based on our community values. I'm happy to describe in greater detail how this can work, but mainly I want to communicate to you that while the initials UFCW may sound strange to you, can I help you find something? Have you tried this? These are familiar sounds from our members' mouths, and at home it might be, you know, when are we going to get that rain? Because frankly, they're your neighbors, and neighbors do what neighbors do, and we're your grocery workers as well. We welcome the opportunity to think this through together as we have in other communities. And I personally thank you for stepping up to leadership in this community. And just for the record, I know people making lots of comments. We represent PCC workers, metropolitan market workers, and lots of other grocers as well. Thanks so much, appreciate it.
Thank you. Welcome, Laura.
Laura Sanderson, 8100 Evergreen Lane, Mercer Island. Good evening. I'm happy to be talking about something I'm actually super passionate about tonight. Cooking, food, and food advocacy over the past six years have become a top priority in my life. I believe it's through food and the environment that we connect and nourish and even heal each other and the earth. And when Jeff and I moved to Mercer Island five years ago, we opened Stopskis in this commitment to our community, to do locally sourced, entirely scratch-made food, meats, and matzo balls, and we all know how long those take, if you've been in it home. When it became apparent that labor to make everything by hand and to source entirely organic was too high to break even, despite being busy, I knew we had to close. I refused to feed people something I would not feed them in my own kitchen. I also refused to cut wages and benefits to those creating the food. Food is a way to show love, bolster health, and if it comes at the expense of those who grow, make, or sell or consume it, it's not worth it. Over the past several decades, food's become highly politicized due to profitability and who controls it. Regardless of where you stand in the food debates, we know corporate control over food is increasing. Federal farm subsidies rarely go to small, local farmers. They go to big, large, commercial agriculture that is beholden to returning the same maximization of profits to the shareholders as corporate grocers are. This is why I've been a 27-year member of the Puget Sound Consumers Co-op. They're owned by their members and are deeply committed to our health and the health of the communities in which they exist. Seven dedicated citizens started Bring PCC to Mercer Island because we believe in member-owned co-ops and organic locally sourced food. We had no idea how fast this would grow, nor did we know that there would be other issues of social justice appearing such as the labor matter that's now been eliminated. We also learned some supporters just want in one store as long as they get another store. Bring PCC to Mercer Island decided to remain thoughtful and maintain quality, food, and labor issues do coincide. We are all connected. So at the time, the city of Mercer Island's working very hard to come together over past mistakes. It seems this is one matter that all of us can work on together and make an excellent decision for everybody. Let's stand up for the grocery workers who live on the island. Let's try to make it possible for other local union-friendly grocery stores to have a chance to negotiate. Met Market or PCC could be wins on all fronts. I'm Catholic, I'm judgment educated, I value service and connectivity in all things, including community, spirituality, commerce, and governance. Recently, Pope Francis released his encyclical on the environment. It's a passionate and articulate call to all people and politicians to serve our common home. This will not happen without the efforts of each of us. We know this. We need to become far more respectful to the earth, consumption, what we're consuming, and from who we procure it. The truth is, none of us can make a change alone, but we can all make change together. We can each do our part towards a common good, using the tools we have. And I'm asking you to use the tools available to our jurisdiction, which will enable the best outcome for all sides involved. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome, Jim.
Last time I forgot who I was, so I wrote it down, so you know who I am. GM Inns at 2930 76th Avenue Southeast. The way I got involved originally was as a stakeholder, and I actually go out every day and try and meet with neighbors on the block and everything. It's just, I go to one or two meetings in the community a week. Got one coming up for the PTA. But I got involved because people were concerned about the grocery. That isn't the exact reason I decided to come down today. As was mentioned to you, nineteen of employees, residents here on the island, three of the employees are homeowners in my block. And I think that's very important to point out to you, the personalness of this, that, you know, it's not just anybody. And I want to mention one of them that works in produce is Carlos Bilios. Suzie Bilios, his wife, was the mother at Shorewood Heights for like 10 years, took care of all the kids over there. Now she has her own small business here on the island. Carlos has two children, one that's finished at Pacific College or University, whatever that is. She now works over at the Fred Hutch. He has another one that just started U-Dub and is studying in London this next quarter. So these are neighbors that we value very much. We don't want to lose them off-island, and we don't want them to have to go off-island to work. One of our big concerns is how do we provide affordable housing on this island so that people can actually live here and work here? I think this is important, that we realize that these are actually homeowners on the island. They're very responsible citizens. Carlos is the Vice President of the Chateau Condominium Association, has been, I think, for over 10 or 20 years now. So neighbors go to Carlos to ask for assistance, knowing what to do, help out in their homes and things like that. So these are not just ordinary citizens, but citizens have done a lot for us. I know Andy that also owns one of the homes on my block. His dad taught half of the kids on Mercer Island at Mercer Island High, so very respected gentleman, passed away a couple of years ago, very respected with the VFW Hall. So the personal nature of this is, I think we need to realize that we want to keep whatever market we bring in, we want to be aware of the fact that these are actually our neighbors and they're homeowners on the island. Thank you all very much, as always.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi. Good evening. My name's Helen Neville. I'm the Senior Vice President of Marketing for Metropolitan Markets, and I'd like to echo the sentiments of Roger and Nancy Page, that we can't underestimate the importance that a local business has on our community and the impact, and how it serves generations and becomes the heart of a community. I think that, I'd also like to acknowledge the sentiments of our friends at PCC. This is a Seattle community, this is a community that Metropolitan Market has been committed to for over 44 years. Our founder and CEO is a Mercer Island resident, and I can tell you, he would love nothing more than to serve his neighbors with this wonderful grocery store on this island. I want to acknowledge Steve Williamson, who's here tonight, and we've had a relationship, a wonderful relationship for over 44 years. I think that's important. I think it's important that we commit to and invest in jobs that are going to stay here, that are going to stay in the region and stay in the state. As I mentioned, we've been locally owned and operated for over 44 years, and we've been actively looking for a site on Mercer Island for over a decade. And, and just want to echo the sentiments of Terry Halverson, founder, who lives on Mercer Island, who was here two weeks ago. He would really, you know, sort of a wife's pursuit, career dream, to have a store in the community in which he lives. Thank you.
Thank you.
Susan Hatch, and I wasn't going to speak about the PCC, I wanted to talk about another issue that I emailed several of you about today. I live at 9004 Shorewood Drive. In terms of the community idea, I used to live in Mount Baker in Seattle, and I always went to the Seward Parks PCC. And that, I definitely think of it as a community. I often think about the people who work there and their names. I just really like that aspect, wanting the bookstore for the island, of having a sense of community. But I decided to talk to you because I emailed you, several of you today, and you emailed me back regarding the spraying of the glyphosate, the Roundup on knotweed, which I've just done a lot of research and sent you, some of you, a lot of links about that. And the last thing I read today was regarding Vancouver, the city of Vancouver's banning of private spraying of that pesticide, except for knotweed, because knotweed is so invasive and they do the injection. But this whole thing with, and I guess that one of the reasons that I'm concerned about is, even if you were to continue spraying it on just knotweed, I would love to see it banned on this island, because everything's, I guess it goes supposedly into the soil, but I'm sure eventually it makes its way into the lake. And more and more evidence is coming out now that there was a bit of a whitewash from Monsanto about it. The EPA is going to be putting out some new guidelines regarding it this year. It's been banned. The United Nations just identified it as a carcinogen. And it's been suspected in a lot of autoimmune diseases, maybe it is an antibiotic that we're putting into the soil, it's not particularly good for fish. And I hate to see it just dumped on the lawn. I used to live at Shorewood Heights some years ago, and my dog got nose cancer after we left. And I used to think, well, maybe it was being so close to the highway, dog sniff. But I, then I see them spraying this, and I see it sold in the grocery store, and I see people putting it all over their lawn, and they really, just so that they don't have lawn leaves, so they have sort of a perfect lawn. And it's, it's an antibiotic. It may be linked with, like, I have gluten intolerance, maybe linked with a lot of bad diseases that people are getting, and it's not particularly good for fish. And last year, my son was in the 10th grade at the high school, and he was reading, they did a whole study on lakes and what happens to a lake near a golf course with all the stuff they put on it. And I thought this, then I saw that stuff being sold at the PCC, and I just think it's, I mean, it could be banned. Many communities are banning it for, banning it for private use, and just like in Vancouver, using it for specialized uses, like getting rid of this invasive knotweed, which I should add, is also possibly becoming resistant to it. So that's all I would like to say. I would just like to ask that you consider banning it on the island, even if you do continue using it to get rid of the knotweed.
Thank you.
Anyway, thanks.
Thank you. Welcome, Michelle.
Hi. My name is Jenny Meacham, and I live at 8451 Southeast 36th Street on the island. And I just wanted to thank the city council for, for considering me for the planning commission, and basically just to say thank you, and if you have any questions for me, I'll be happy, excuse me, happy to speak with you. Also, on a completely unrelated topic, I think that PCC would be a fabulous idea. I've been a longtime member of co-ops and was one of the founders of a student co-op, has a co-op many years ago. Anyway, that's all I wanted to say, and thank you.
Thank you. Welcome, Ellen.
I live at 4052 94th Avenue Southeast, and I see you're already getting to know me. This is the fourth time I've come with this particular issue. It's pickleball again. And I'll take a page from the people who are talking about the PCC co-op. We have probably 40 to 50 pickleball players that use the Mercer Island facility. I myself play there for about eight hours a week. I could play there for maybe nine and a half hours a week. If you would just listen one time and have the constituents, that is, the people that play, help you design the rules for when the place is available. There are lots of very, very simple fixes to having us be kicked off at 2:00 and then watch this beautiful gym that you've built stay empty for an hour or an hour and a half, it's as long as I've ever stayed to check on it. And it can be fixed. It won't cost a cent. All I'm asking is, you have a designated representative meet with me and perhaps one of the other pickleball players, and fix these, these rules that just really annoy people. And why do it? So, okay, this is the fourth time, and I'm, as long as I'm living on Mercer Island, I'll keep coming back. Thank you.
And we'll keep welcoming you.
It's not enough.
All right. Welcome, Michelle.
Good evening. Is this on? Okay. Hi, I'm Michelle Goldberg, 2212 78th Avenue Southeast. I am not here to talk about PCC or Metropolitan Market. I'm here to speak instead about the Town Center Visioning Process Phase 3. And I missed the June 15th meeting, but I've watched the video, and I understand that several people spoke that night about how the process, at least Phase 1 and Phase 2, have gone awry. And I am concerned now that the city is going to be spending additional money to dig itself deeper into a hole that is not really going to have the results that many islanders really want for their town center. So, the engagement process was started a couple of months ago. Someone at that time astutely pointed out the irony of the fact that the engagement process was crafted without any engagement process. It was, you know, they formulated some plan to appoint people to be stakeholders. Some would argue that the stakeholders are not representative of the community. There are multiple layers. But if the intent of the Town Center Visioning Process was to find out what islanders want, then I would suggest that the, that the process has been backwards. So I would have liked to have seen some kind of effort to reach out to the community first, educate them about the different issues, let them know the various options. Talk about school enrollment issues. Talk about the fact that Mercer Island might be maxed out at 25,000 people, as Scott Greenberg recently said at the mini-planning session. Once you have the details about school enrollment and the cyclical nature of school enrollment, the traffic congestion issues, and all of the density issues, then people are in a better position to understand what the town center should look like and how tall our buildings should be. So I'm intrigued by this idea, now finally, in Phase 3, there's going to be a phone survey. 300 people will be called, 300 registered voters. I'm not sure who's going to craft the questions. I'm not sure how much information is going to be given when they do the survey. But I do question how scientific the results will be, whether it's really representative of the islanders. I've talked to so many people, and I know very few people who have said that they would like five-story buildings on every plot of town center land. Finally, I had suggested once before that the city send out something with the water bills. Many times I've mentioned that not everyone has a computer. There's a large percentage of people who do not get their news from next door or the Mercer Island reporter, and if, but everyone has water. So if you send out something to let people know that they are doing a town center vision, we would reach out to everyone and you'd find out what everyone is thinking. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ira.
Ira Appelman, 4436 Ferncroft Road. I have three, three things to say. First, I object to the violation of the Open Public Meetings Act by reading from a statute of generic purpose. Ira Appelman, four four three six Ferncroft Road. I have three things to say. First, I object to the violation of the Open Public Meetings Act by reading from a statute of generic purpose. That's not stating the purpose of the executive session. Today, we might find out, because you're going to do something else with it, but normally we wouldn't find out anything about the executive session. Potential fireers of lawsuits know who they are, but the audience listening doesn't, because you don't mention it with a generic statement. The people don't give up their sovereignty, and they don't give the council the right to tell us what we should know and what we shouldn't know according to the statute. The people of this state do not yield their sovereignty to the agencies which serve them. The people in delegating authority do not give their public servants the right to decide what is good for the people to know, and what is not good for the people to know. The people insist on remaining informed so that they retain control over the instruments they've created. In this case, the council is using a generic statement to hide from the, usually, not only in this case, but in others, to hide from the public what's really going on. And the only thing that you are not supposed to tell the public is something that it would help the filer of a lawsuit to get more money from the city, and who the filer is isn't one of them. My second point, Seth Harry is a dense thinker, as far as I can tell. I'm open to evidence that he isn't. He put a civic center, in his workshop, he puts a civic center in Merciade Park, which I don't favor. But he's a dense thinker, and I don't think we should throw another fifty thousand dollars at him. Deputy Mayor Grau says that most islanders favor five-story buildings. I don't think that's true, based on my experience in talking with people. And that almost the reason for the stakeholders group is because people were complaining about the five-story buildings. I think it's been stacked, the stakeholders group has been stacked with dense thinkers. You've never answered the question, what went wrong, which I asked from the beginning, what went wrong that created the bad things in the town center? And before, until we answer that, we're not going to keep on making the same mistakes, which I think we are now. We need first to decide what our town center should be, and then get a consultant to help us make the town center that way. We're doing it backwards here. And my third point is that I'm not sure how the council is going to determine what business is going to end up in the Albertsons, in the old Albertsons Building. I am intrigued by what the representative was saying about worker retention. I also know Carlos and Andy, and would like to see them retained. I think that's an interesting idea that could be discussed at council, I've never heard it. I think with respect to the grocer that will go in there, if it is going to remain a grocery store, I don't know what the council can do, but I think citizens showing up here might at least tell the owner something, and maybe the owner will make a different decision. Thanks.
Thank you. Welcome, Tom.
Hello, Tom Ackroyd, two four two seven Eighty-Fourth Avenue Southeast, Mercer Island, Washington, ninety-eight, Bill Fouro. And I'm just up here for two different versions of topics. One is, I'm myth-busting again. And then the second thing are just some things I'd like the council to consider. The first is, when Save Our Suburbs was started, it was really a grassroots effort. It started with twenty people, then we had fifty people, then we had hundreds of people. And I know it's an election year, but I'm not involved with SOS anymore, but I want to make it clear, SOS was never anti-growth. It still is not anti-growth. It never has been. It's been pro-responsible growth, not unabridged density amassing. So I just want to make that very clear. The second thing is SOS, and you have to ask others, because I'm not involved, does not have a slate of candidates that they have endorsed. That is another myth that's out there. And the third thing is, there is a perception that there are people who are challenging incumbents that are running as a slate. And that can be further from the truth as well. I did send out an email that said that there are certain people that are going to get my vote, but it is not an endorsement or a slate. And what is wonderful about the people that are running is that I don't agree with them on everything. It's not a group think activity, and I think, you know, I have nothing against anybody up here, but they do bring a lot of diversity to the discourse that's going to happen over the next four months, four months? Yeah, four months. So anyways, I just want to make that clear, because I think we do a disservice when we start putting labels on people. And I think that there's been a targeted effort to undermine SOS and label it as anti-growth and anti-development, when that couldn't be further from the truth. Back to Roger for a second. I've been going to that bookstore for years, and I run into my friends who write books, and he puts her books in there, and I think Terry, you said that that's the heart of the community. And there are two buildings that I like on this island, Island Books for the inside of the building, and Starbuck's for the outside of the building. I feel very calm, very pleasant in that building, and that's what I'd really like to see, is more of that kind of intentional design. No more Texas Donuts. I don't have anything against Heinz, but I'm not for amassing, never have been, and I hear that regularly from the community. And then finally, before any major decisions are made by this council, I would request that maybe you think about sliding out the big ones around degrading our levels of services further until after the election. I think that is a major issue that we need to really look at carefully. Reducing our level of services is a big topic. And then finally, a question. I'd like to know who I can work with to do a public-private partnership to look at acquiring the assemblage of Heinz properties within the city. You've noticed that there are several people that have offered seven-figure donations, and we want to, I hope you'd take that seriously and look at if there is an opportunity to do something there. So if you could tell me that name, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Welcome, Celine.
Celine Nice, fifty-six nineteen Eighty-Ninth Avenue Southeast. I just wanted to reference the stakeholder appropriation. I know it was at the last meeting, and it was pushed to this meeting. Last time it was on the agenda, it also included a provision to not fund the work that needs to be done for the impact fees for transportation in parks. I see that's on the agenda item again tonight. I'm concerned, you know, the school is ready to go with their language. They have single-family resident and multifamily language written for inclusion in the city code. And I would just like to see if there will be a way to appropriate some of the portion of the stakeholder funds, have the commission the survey, reach out to the island residents that sorely need to be included in that process. I'm a stakeholder member, and so I understand intimately the feelings that island residents have not being included in that process in a deeper way, a more thoughtful way. I know that they've had a lot of public engagement sessions, but I think reaching out to them at three hundred citizens on a eight-minute survey, that that should be a logical next step. I know Councilmember Berlin, you say fail fast. You're certainly familiar with software development and the Agile principles. I think it makes sense to wrap up the transportation and park impact fee work, try and pass that along with schools. We know, just based on the Shorewood proposal, with ninety new apartments in two buildings, that that was almost a hundred percent difference in what would be collected just for the school impact fees over the super mitigation fees. So if there's any consideration that can be given to that item tonight, I'd like to see the survey funded for the stakeholder meetings, and I would like to see the forty-four thousand dollars spent on the language that is necessary to institute the transportation in the park impact fees. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome, Ray.
Gary Robinson, six oh two six East Mercer Way. You know, I wasn't going to speak, but having listened to everyone, and been at the mini-planning session, I was amazed when we had the presentation on MICA, and it was presented as a slam dunk. And I thought, how can that be, when everything I read says that people don't believe it should be done the way it's being done? So I would like to support what Tom has just said, and that is, why don't we have a public-private partnership to take what's been called the Heinz property? That would be the ideal win-win solution, as the head of MICA said, for MICA, to have it there as opposed to in Merciade Park. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, with that, I'm going to close public comments. Thank you, and we will move on to, oh, well, all right, I will reopen public comments. Welcome. If there's anyone else, please go ahead and stand up behind us, so that we're not going to be doing that.
My name is Holly Glazer. My address is four five five four East Mercer Way.
And I'm sorry, your name, I missed it.
Holly Glazer, H-O-L-L-Y-G-L-A-S-E-R. And I'm at four five five four East Mercer Way. I don't want to lose my park. There are fewer and fewer places where you can just go and lay down or play. I think that would be terrible for the island. And the only thing I do want for sure in a grocery store is that when I pay for my food, I want to know that the person who's taking care of me at that moment, and the people who stock the food, will be able to go buy food for themselves and have a living wage. I think it's disgraceful to pay people the lowest possible wage, or preempt public land just to make a store. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, with that, I will again close public comment. We'll move to minutes. We have two sets of minutes for June first and June fifteenth. I'm looking for a motion on the June first minutes.
I move to accept the regular meeting minutes of June first, two thousand and fifteen. Second.
Any changes?
I think those would be amended. No, that's the one I think fifteen.
All right. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Anyone?
I move to accept the regular meeting minutes of the June fifteenth, two thousand and fifteen meeting. Second.
I move to, I'd like to make amended minutes part.
Can we hold one second, because this isn't, these are correct. The amended minutes are still incorrect. The, that delete fifteen point fourteen oh seven oh eight four is incorrect. But the first two bullet points were actually part of a second motion, which failed for one of the second. So the first motion which passed was only the third bullet point, and that passed seven zero. And then the second motion, which I made, was the first two bullet points, and that failed for one of the second. So both of those two bullet points should not be in there.
Why don't I just bring the minutes back at the next meeting?
Okay.
Because if you delete that first bullet point, you create havoc in the ordinance.
So, Allie, to back us out of a motion in a second.
I withdraw my motion. I withdraw my motion to approve the June fifteenth minutes.
And I remove mine, second.
All right, I will assume we're all right with that, then. We move to consent calendar. We have payables, payroll, and Agenda Bill five zero eight-nine, summer celebration fireworks tournament. Is there a motion to accept the consent calendar?
I move to.
Could be second?
Second.
All right, moved in seconded. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We'll move to the no Agenda Bill Albertsons Grocery Site Update, which I believe we were going to do first, and then we're going to move to the added Agenda Bill after that, right? So this, I asked Noel to put this on the calendar, simply because I know there's a great deal of interest in the community on this topic, and asked that he give us a brief, it'd be a very brief update, on the situation from the city's perspective.
Oh, yeah, just.
Let me interrupt first. I don't understand why, I respect your authority to put this on the agenda, but at the last meeting, and I listened to the thirteen minutes where we talked about Albertson, you had two council members who were opposed to the city getting any more involvement. You had one council member that was, that did want us to get involved, and no other council member said anything, so that's kind of a two-one. And then the last thing you left was, expect, okay, we've heard, we had the opportunity, there were two to one, I guess, and then you said, quote-unquote, expect no action. And then mysteriously, this thing pops up on the agenda item, which wasn't on schedule, which wasn't on our planning schedule. Why the change in heart? Why are we doing this?
I think as well as I could, I just said, I think there's a great deal of community interest, and I thought because the city has some information to offer about the state of affairs, it'd be worth offering that information. That's different from asking the council to take action on this. And I'm still, there's nothing here that changes that.
Noel, isn't there, isn't there an ordinance that you've been according?
I'd like an informational update. If that's all it is.
How about if I give my quick update, and we can go from there as to whether there's further council discussion or direction for tonight? I have a very, very short update. That is just, our understanding from parties involved is that the lease has been fully executed for the site, and that a public announcement of some kind is expected within the next week. So that's all the information I have. At this stage, city staff is primarily, you know, we have received some information, and simply passing that along to you tonight.
Okay.
And just to clarify, I was the one who asked that the city attorney circulate the ordinance. And the only reason I did that was because I saw from Craig's email that they were going to be coming here to testify, and I wanted to make sure, I hadn't seen the ordinance myself. I heard there was something circulating around. So I asked the city attorney to circulate it, just so as we got public testimony, the council would have some idea what they were talking about. Otherwise, I thought we'd sit here and all look sort of stupid, and not have a clue what was being discussed. So that's the only reason you got the ordinance, and it was entirely in my request that Kerry circulated it, so I could see it, and so everyone else in the council at least could know what was being talked about.
Well, I guess as deputy mayor, you have that authority to just make a request like that and get my ordinance on it.
I didn't ask for an ordinance, I just asked that Kerry circulate what she had been given. This is not drafted by her. I had no idea she had done any research on it, and I guess I hadn't seen it till the same time you saw mine. So if this was all news to me, it was just so that we would know what the public was talking to us about.
Benson?
I mean, to make it quite clear, this is, we're not taking any action on this ordinance. It was just provided as information. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Unless it's your will to go there, then yeah, there's no.
I'll speak to that if that's where we're headed, but Noel, you said that the lease has been executed, is that correct?
And that's our understanding, that's what we've been told.
Okay, and that somehow an announcement's going to come later this week or next week?
That's what we were told, yes.
Jane.
Have any building permits been applied for?
Uh, no.
Anything else? Debbie.
When you say that's what we've been told, can you just, I don't need the name, and I don't need the company, but can you tell me, when you say we've been told, what parties are telling us?
Uh, one of the parties involved in the negotiation has told us that. The potential tenant has told us that.
The potential tenant, okay.
Anyone else? All right, that's all we've got on that one. So barring anything else, we'll move on to our new Agenda Bill, which has no number, but which was moved to the calendar at the beginning of the meeting. I'm sorry, are we back on the last one, or are we still moving on?
I think so.
Okay.
So, this all may be moot, because, you know, obviously, if the lease has been signed, the lease has been signed, and we don't know who it's with. The question is, is it worth, does the council have any interest in expressing any kind, I'm not, number one, when I saw the ordinance, I was not, I have my misgivings about the language of the ordinance, okay? So I want to make that perfectly clear. But on the other hand, the issue is, is there any appetite by the council to talk about the principles of worker retention, just as a matter principle in support of those values? I'm just raising that as a question. I'm not, I'm clearly not in support of the ordinance, the direction of the ordinance.
Okay, question asked. Debbie.
I mean, this whole thing is awkward, to say the least, but let me understand, then, what sequencing we would be looking at. So we don't know whether or not a lease has been signed. We don't know, in theory, if and when for sure a lease will be signed. There has been suggested legislation regarding worker retention that's been at least put out there. What would be the timeline? If council wanted to do anything, I'm not saying yes or no in what that is, if council wanted to do- wanted to do anything, by when would we have to do something? Because, and it all feels like it's this big stew that's kind of been thrown at us without having a clear path any which way. So what would be, what's the sequencing here? To a certain extent in Town Center, we use this word vest, you know? So at what point would an ordinance such as this vest?
So let me pause this because, Carrie, you may be prepared to answer that, but there's been no request that you be prepared to answer that. And if there's an interest on the part of council to go down that path, I think we do want, out of fairness, do you, give you room to say, "I could research this topic if you like, but I'm not prepared to answer that."
Thank you, Mayor and Councilmember Bertin. No, I've not done extensive research on the ordinance that was provided as a draft to the city manager, who then gave it to me to look at, and I provided it to the entire council for information for discussion purposes only. If the council, the majority of the council expresses a will to have this looked into further, then that's direction that the council could give as soon as tonight, or the council could give it whenever the council sees fit, frankly. So, and it's really up to the council in terms of sequencing and timing.
So the idea came from, thank you, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. So the idea came from the city manager, it came from the deputy mayor, or it came from a citizen?
No, to clarify, it's my understanding that the draft ordinance was provided by a citizen.
And we just have citizens have the ability to get stuff on the, in front of the council, like that? How does that happen?
I actually have...
Or did Deputy Mayor Gross do it?
No, as I explained already, Mike, I knew this ordinance, I'd heard that this ordinance had been sent in. We all got the email from Craig saying, asking members of the public to come down here and talk to us about Albertson's. And so my request to Carrie was to circulate the ordinance so at least I could see it and I assumed you would want to see it also. So you knew when they would be, we were being asked about it, we would be able to understand what we were being asked. And that's, I, that's the sole purpose and that it was circulated. It was not, I did not ask the city attorney to do anything with this other than circulate it for your information.
Dan, I got this email from the council or from staff and nowhere in here does it say that you were involved with it. And I'm just concerned with the influence that, that is being, that this council is being influenced on, on something that's coming out of left field, that's coming out of left field. And I don't see, I don't see where you were involved with it. But I appreciate your willingness to step up to that plate.
So coming back to the topic at hand, Mike, is there a direction?
Yeah, well, obviously, you know, I listened to a wonderful story by Councilmember Wong about his family and being, developing a supermarket on Capitol Hill.
Corner grocery store.
Corner grocery store on corner supermarket. But just a wonderful story of the American dream. And I see this as, as a barrier to entry.
This being your hand?
This being, this amendment that we have here.
I'm being facetious, sorry.
I know, I know, that's fine. This amendment we have here to, what do we call it, to retain workers, and I see that being a barrier to entry for people like Mr. Wong. I mean, you know, PCCs, the Met, et cetera, those are great. Let the market bear that out. I certainly don't want the council to influence what fills that vacancy. But when you start doing amendments that, that will burden a new business or a company that tries to take over this vacant structure, that's a barrier to entry and it could prevent someone like Wong Senior from developing a corner grocery store on Mercer Island. So I certainly am not for this at all. And I certainly don't like the potential litigation that, that may open up for the, for the city. I'll just say one other thing. I bought some 80/20 hamburger over the weekend because I like the marbling effect of them.
80% fat, 20% meat?
No, the other way around, the other way around. But you know, it's at $4.99, it's at $4.99 a pound at, at the grocery store, QFC Grocery Store. And, you know, I just, and I looked at the other organic stuff, it's $7.89 or so a pound. And I said, I mean, I just don't, I have, I see a disconnect. We talk about affordability, but we're talking about supermarkets that, that cost seven, that carry hamburger that costs $7.89 a pound versus the $4.99 a pound. There's a disconnect that I'm uncomfortable with there. I don't think that, I certainly don't think the council should get involved with that.
On hamburger now, the topic is hamburger.
I'm off hamburger. I just have a question, if I may, for you, if you know, or the city attorney. The email that we received from the city attorney said that, or this was from Noel, said that there was no other city in Washington State that had adopted a type of ordinance like this. And yet we heard from a person of authority who was giving appearances that it is proven legal in Washington State. Could you reconcile perhaps, Carrie?
Councilmember Brahm, I heard the same comment during the appearances from the representative from the grocery union. And again, as I said before, I haven't taken the time to do any extensive research on this, but based on my preliminary research, very quick indeed, I was not able to determine whether any other Washington city had passed a grocery worker retention ordinance such as this. That doesn't mean that absolutely hasn't happened and I would be also, you know, to your point, interested in finding out if in fact there were other Washington cities. There certainly are other cities in the state of California and my research revealed Washington DC, some, I believe a similar ordinance has been passed by the District of Columbia in Washington DC. And then beyond that, I'm only aware of California cities that have passed it.
Terry?
So I'd like to make a comment and then respond to Councilmember Wong's question. So the comment, I did appreciate having the issue explained through the submission of the ordinance to the council so that tonight when people did testify, I did have some background and understanding of that issue. So I was appreciative of having that, that background. To Councilmember Wong's question of whether this is a value that we espouse or would like to have further conversation as a council, I think it is an interesting concept. It's one I hadn't heard of before in addressing in this way through an ordinance. But I don't think that, I think it's something that we should weigh against competing priorities for the rest of the work plan for the year because it seems to me that it is likely too late to, to address the issue that's in front of us, just based on the timing that's already been discussed.
To Benson, and then back to Jane, I think.
Yeah, number one, thank you for your comment, Councilmember Popmeyer. I will, I'm totally in agreement. Basically, I wanted to raise the issue because frankly, it seemed like we were just, you know, leaving it and the issue had been raised and we're just sort of moving on. I think I wanted to make sure that there was some closure to it and so we, for making a decision, that it be somewhat intentional. And I also agree, based on what I've heard, that everything, this ordinance or the language in it, it may be too late anyway. If the lease has been signed, I guess we'll find out in a couple of weeks what is involved and who the prospective tenant is. But again, it's a novel concept. I had not heard it myself, but again, it seems, seems to me it's too late to talk about it now. It may surface again, but, you know, I just wanted to make sure that we, as a council, came to some sort of collective decision. Okay, we've talked about it, let's move on. As was pointed out, we have a lot of other priority items.
Jane?
Well, I want to, I guess, weigh in and agree with Councilmembers Popmeyer and Wong and say that I think we need to be very thoughtful about this because we'd be sort of, it seems to me, first off, first in the state in an area that I'm not sure, I'm not sure we want to be first in. I'd hate to be subject of a lawsuit because we sort of jumped in on something that sounded like a good bandwagon to be on. It also opens the door to, what about the gift store workers' retention policy or drug store workers' retention policy? You know, are we focusing just on, on one kind of retail activity? I just think we need to really sit back and think about this before we jump in. And I do think it's going to be too late in this case.
I think I'm hearing enough sentiment towards not just moving on, but giving some sort of at least informal thumbs up, thumbs down as to whether council wants to consider this further. Is that correct? So Debbie, you got something before I ask for thumbs up, thumbs down on this?
There's something before that. And not to say that the thumbs up, thumbs down isn't important, but to me, what is important is I think that the number of very clear messages that have come through the community tonight on multiple fronts, that I think do come back to what is positive and what is constructive about Mercer Island, and that is that we care about our community. We care about the people who work with us and not necessarily for us, but whether it be books, whether it be food, I go back to the stories of the true value. When there was debate about whether or not we should play a role in that, and it wasn't a formal role, but it was certainly an advocacy that many people in this community could play to make sure very valued, family valued employees and service remained local. So all I can say is almost irrespective, I hope that, as somebody said, I don't remember if it was council or the community, and I apologize, that I hope employers are listening to this. And I hope, whether there's a thumbs up or thumbs down, they recognize that it is a place that cares and it is a place that will watch out and expects integrity in operations. So if that comes through above all else, I, I think it's been a great exercise to go through.
There's anyone? All right, well, I will, I'll echo the sentiment. I think, I guess I know where this is going. I certainly applaud the folks out in the audience who have expressed enthusiasm for PCC and Met Market and living wage jobs. I think these are important values that, you know, sort of highlighted in great deal by our conversation about island books and the importance of businesses and in our community. I think in this particular case, though, the way forward for us at the moment is to let the free market do its work and certainly encourage any employer that's here to do right by their workers. But I will be a thumbs down on this, thinking that we are best to leave this to the free market. The one thing that I think would be, the sort of worst case outcome that one could imagine would be that we enter into this, somehow skew the deal that's on the table and then no other deal comes to the table. And that would be a terrible outcome, I think, for this community. So the fact that we've gotten enthusiastic signer for a deal right now is something to be considered of great interest to us. For that reason, I will give my thumbs down on this one. So thumbs up, thumbs down, unless there's anyone else? All right.
Could you clarify what we're...
No, it's just, no, just do it. Thank you, Terry. Thumbs up, I would like to have further counsel consideration of a worker retention policy or ordinance. Thumbs down, no. Okay, so without it being a formal motion, that is put to rest. We move to our, Mike, are you done with this one?
Actually, I wanted to remind you, we were going to do the executive session.
And that's where I was about to go, sorry. Thank you. So agenda bill unnamed that comes, stems from our executive session. I think I'm looking for somebody to simply make a motion as dictated there. Please.
Move to authorize the city manager to sign the settlement agreement, utility easement, quickly indeed, and related documents regarding the ownership of the rights of, right of lays adjacent to the property located at 2913 70th Avenue Southeast.
Second? All right, moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, the only thing I want to say, the reason I voted against putting this on the agenda was because I wanted this item to be seen by the public for a fair amount of time. That'll be two weeks until the next council meeting. I don't see any, I don't see any problems at all with this agenda item. The public will see it eventually, I'm sure. But here again, for transparency sake and for the purpose of procedure, and who knows, there might be an issue out there that an astute citizen may bring to our attention that through our review, our expert review, we just missed. And for that, that's, I wanted to explain why I didn't vote for it being on the agenda.
Is that, is that motion sufficient, Christina, for your purposes?
Yes.
Any discussion, further discussion, I should say? All right, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We move to agenda bill 509, okay, we're going for another one. This is going to be a long one. We're almost at 90 minutes. It's sometimes a habit of stopping at the 90-minute mark. Is anybody needed? Okay, on to agenda bill 5090, Town Center Visioning and Code Update Budget Authorization. Welcome, Scott.
Thank you, Scott Greenberg, your Development Services Group Director. Much of this agenda bill you saw at your last meeting, so I'm not going to really go over that anymore. I'll just highlight a couple of the changes. First of all, at your last meeting, you asked us to work with the City Council's Town Center Subcommittee on sort of refining the previous agenda bill, and this is what's come back to you. We are proposing changing out one of the consultants, so not renewing the contract with Three Square Blocks, who was sort of our public engagement, public facilitation consultant, and going a bit different direction with that, somebody who has some different skills in terms of facilitation and more strategic communication kinds of skills. And then the second piece is council's direction was to look at doing a survey of the public regarding the Town Center. We have EMC Research's proposal here for you as part of your agenda bill as exhibit number four. I did want to speak briefly to comment that was made during appearances regarding the impact fee funding. We only mentioned it because we just wanted you to see the bigger picture, that there's a certain amount of funding you set aside from 2014 budget surplus for the impact fee analysis. If this work in front of you is funded for Town Center, that leaves you a bit short to fund a second phase of the impact fee work for transportation and parks. And when we bring you those studies over the next couple of meetings, we'll come with the funding requests for Phase Two of those. You'll need to work with our finance director trying to find funding for those two items. I will say, the school impact fee work does not require additional funding. The school district essentially funded that study themselves and that will be going to the Planning Commission for them to review a draft ordinance June 15th. They will be holding a public hearing on that ordinance that evening. So that's already proceeding forward and should, your dais in, I think it's first meeting of August and then your first meeting of September. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
All right, questions? Benson?
Just for clarification, so, you know, as far as the, in talking about Phase Three, I know there's been a lot of concerns raised by not only the stakeholder group, by the community and by members of the council here regarding the deliverables. I know that in the proposal by Seth Harry, there are lists of some deliverables, but I didn't see any specific dates that were associated. I mean, are, is that something that's being worked on right now as far as specific deadlines for Seth to hit?
Yes. Yeah, we're working, we are working with Seth on some very specific dates down to when things are due to staff and Subcommittee and others for review.
Debbie and then Mike. Debbie and then Mike.
Let's go ahead, go ahead, Mike.
Okay.
So what's the, Scott, what's the process for approving the survey questions?
That's something that we'll work with the Town Center Subcommittee on. Of course, if the council wants a different process, that's fine.
Who's we?
The EMC Research and staff would be working with the council Subcommittee on forming those questions. I think we had talked about the possibility of having the TCLG involved with also reviewing, maybe not the specific questions and how they're asked, that we're going to leave that to the experts, but just in terms of what information do we want to find out from the survey?
Well, so is TCLG the right organization or the TCSG? Well, I think, we need to get buy-in. The problem, one of the problems we had was that there was suspicion on the makeup and the direction was preordained on the TCSG. So if we don't get buy-in on these questions from the TCSG, we're going to repeat the same mistake.
Again, that's something for you all to discuss. The folks from the survey company did suggest that we not have 42 people involved in trying to come up with survey questions because it will never get done. It's just, it's hard to come up with a question that's going to satisfy 42 people.
So the questions would deal strictly with?
Yeah, I think, just, you know, we, part of what we were, the plan was here in terms of working with the council Subcommittee is that the first order of business would be to get the interim report done that was talked about at your mini-planning session. And again, all of this flows from what we talked about the mini-planning session in terms of the Phase Three Plan. So the idea would be to get the interim report done, and then based on the elements of that, maybe go back to the TCLG and make sure we identify from that, and what are the key elements that we think we need to get statistically valid public input on? Not draft the questions themselves, but help identify what are the key areas we need input on, and then work with the experts on surveying as to how do you draft a neutral, appropriate question that'll help get us the information that you, as the ultimate decision-makers, will find helpful. That's, that's the idea here. So that's, that's what we were thinking at this point. But obviously, the engagement plan itself is subject to input and direction from the council, so.
Mike, I'm going to ask you to hold for a minute because you're drilling down in a way. I think as others ask their questions, the whole thing may take a little bit more shape. To Jane, and then to Debbie, and then to Terry, and then I'm going to throw in a few words. So Jane, you're up.
Oh, well, I just wanted to get a sense of, if the questionnaire is developed based upon the results of the interim report, it looks like it takes 30 days to get a statistically significant survey done. So I'm wondering when, when might we plan to do the survey? And also, I, just as a comment, maybe to Mike's point, I was a part of the Mercer Island School District's survey group that helped develop the questions that were asked after the failure of the bond issue a couple of years ago. Very important survey, very divisive atmosphere, and there were about a dozen people, and I think 42 would be way too many. But it was a very good process, and we met, I think, twice. And I, for that reason, I think the Town Center Liaison Group would be the appropriate size for that kind of activity. But when do you see perhaps having the survey conducted?
Well, on Exhibit Two, Page Five of the agenda bill, it shows the interim report would be issued to the community end of July. So I think after that, we may be able to start working with EMC a little bit before that, if there's a direction coming from that interim report, so we don't lose too much time. But, you know, I would think if there was a, I don't, I've never done one of these surveys myself, so I don't know how long it would take to come up with the questions. But if it takes a week or two, for example, then the survey could be done in mid-August, start in mid-August, I think it runs two or three weeks, and then they'd analyze it. So you would probably see results probably around the first meeting of October with this kind of schedule.
Thank you.
Debbie, Terry, me, Mike.
Scott, in an email that I had sent you this weekend, I had asked for more information on this new consultant. And so I'd like to understand more in terms of what was put out there and what the criteria was for selecting this person or company. Because I think that's, you know, that's been one of the points of concern, along with many throughout this process, that there was both the right skill set and probably the right set of experiences that people were bringing into this. I think that's an important component. If you could please share how you went about that?
Yeah, I'll speak to that, because I work close to you and Scott to Toronto. And we haven't contracted with anybody yet, so we have not hired someone. We're waiting on appropriation to do that. But I think the key here is we realized as we came to the conclusion of Phase Two, and people raised concerns about things that weren't done as well as they could have, or new things we needed to do going into the next round, that it would benefit us to get someone with even more advanced skill set in both meeting facilitation and in strategically developing communications plans, and making sure that our engagement is done well, that our project is well-managed, that we have deliverables that make sense. And so the skill set that we're looking at, and we've got one consultant in mind that we've talked with that I think has done the type of work that would benefit us, is a pretty high-level meeting facilitator, project manager, public engagement expert who can really assess what we've done to date, and then help make sure that we craft that in a way that really has our best foot going forward. So, and then can also help us with communications and with facilitating meetings in the next round.
So as a follow-up to that, you made an important point, and that is that this person or somebody of this caliber could help craft the process going forward. So I have kind of a question then as to what it is that we're looking at here tonight. If what we're saying is one of the key dependencies is we want to bring in somebody with that level of, this is called gravitas, then I would wonder if we wouldn't be holding off a little bit longer to see what that person, together with, you know, appropriate levels of, I would say, you know, particularly Noel, your input, would then put forward? So I feel like to a certain extent, maybe we're building something, and then we're having somebody come in and tell us whether it's good, bad, or rubber stamp it. So can you clarify a little bit about sequencing here? If this, I guess my point is if this person is so seasoned, this person is so good, should we not get them in before we design the process or the remainder of it?
Terry, do you mind if I usurp your moment here for a minute? Because I, here's a thought. It occurs to me in my look at this that, I'm not quite sure how to enter into it, so a big topic. It's fairly clear to me that an interim report at this point makes a lot of sense. I think all of us feel that there has been a lot that's gone on, but putting that to paper and making that very clear to ourselves, to our stakeholders, and to the world, has becomes an important next step, so that we all can agree that that's where we are in time. Beyond that, I think there are, there are still some big questions about how we go forward. Building off of what Mike's starting, the path Mike's starting down, I have a great deal of concern about a statistically valid survey, a statistically valid sampling that we might do. And my concern is that the questions would have to be crafted perfectly, and they would, and the person answering the question would have to have all of the appropriate information to be able to answer the question well. And I think it's very difficult to make sure the question both provides all the possible information that a person could need, and allows them to make, to make the right decision and offer the right feedback. So I've got hesitation about that, and I think what ends up happening is that we end up in a pitch battle over what those questions look like, or whoever's part of that process, because at the end of the day, of course, the outcome will be taken as sacrosanct. If indeed the public said it only wanted this, then we essentially will be beholden to doing that. And so we want to make sure that it's absolutely right if we go down that path. My thought, this is building off of Debbie's comment and a little bit my prior conversations with Noel, is that the person he has in mind is someone who Noel's worked with in the past and has a great deal of facility in doing this kind of project management work. And so my thought is that we advance through the interim report while bringing in somebody who can look at this whole process, and take a pause on a survey or other next steps with the intent of getting another set of eyes on our process, and potentially, you know, very much a look at the input we've been getting from the public, you know, several members of the public, several members of the liaison committee and the stakeholder committee, and trying to meld that into a proposed path forward. And the other comment I would make is we've, and to the credit of those on the Subcommittee, have been operating with, not just looking at the next step, but looking several steps ahead with the intent of trying to wrap this process up by, first it was by June, and then it was by year-end. My sense is that we've done ourselves, we've made the task more difficult than we could reasonably handle by trying to hand, by trying to lay out all of those steps and get them all squeezed in. And so my thought is that it, I think it would behoove us to look just that one step, to get this interim report done and get a reevaluation of where we are, and then let's have a restart from there. So to our future council members, Alt-Control-Delete, I wouldn't, I'm not suggesting that, but I am suggesting a, another set of eyes on this, and at the same time that this interim report's available, a review, pulling input from lots of places as to where we go forward. Now, I know that's a bit of a big departure from where we have been, and I put it out there, and now I'll take all the heat for having put it out there. I'm going to give Terry first dibs because I did take her spot.
Would you mind summarizing what you just said, though? I think I'm on board, but can you summarize what you just said?
And that scares me. Do the interim report. Bring in the outside person, the new outside person. Have that person engage in a process of review of where we are. Assessment of all the inputs, the process so far, and the public inputs that have expressed concerns or forward-looking direction, and then have a decision as to the path forward at that point. To Terry, then Dan, and then Jane.
Councilmember Bertin asked two of my questions, and I have a third. And that is, I do feel strongly about being able to move forward on the impact fee work when that comes along. So I just wanted to ask a question, maybe of our finance director or the city manager, will we be able to find the funds necessary to hold to that schedule?
Chip, do you want to speak to the funding question? And then the other thing I just emphasize is the type of pause and assessment on the Town Center Act that the mayor's described does not apply to the impact fee work, so we would still see that as a separate track. So just to make that clear. But the question is, funding for the, assuming council, when we get to the parks and transportation impact fees over the next couple of meetings, wants to authorize the full rate study to get us to an ordinance, identifying funding to support that work?
Right. Probably the best option would be appropriating some of our sales tax. Sales tax is coming in much stronger than budgeted this year, and so we've done it in the past. I don't like doing it, but we can do it, where we appropriate some piece of that for impact fees. The other option, which I don't think is a really good option, if memory serves me, is beautification fund. I don't think it fits neatly into the purpose, the purposes prescribed within that fund. It's really focused on Town Center.
I think the answer is we, if it's the council's will to take that to the next level, we'll, we'll identify the funding.
Why do you not like what you're proposing that we do to fund the impact fees?
I don't like counting my chickens before they hatch. And while, you know, we're basically at mid-year, and things look really, really good at this point, I'm just nervous about what could happen to the economy depending what's going on in Europe.
Yeah, we basically be banking on a continued rate of sales tax through the end of the year to have enough money for those.
So it's not the chickens that have already hatched in the first six months? You're talking about the next hatch?
Yeah.
Okay. We're clarifying.
To Dan.
So I don't have any objection to the substance of what you said, Bruce, but I point out to the council that what we already adopted last week for what's called the Phase Three Plan, there's nothing that's in there that's inconsistent with what you said. The only thing that talked about scheduling was the last paragraph, which talked about the community engagement schedule. And it was to be determined, it said revised community engagement schedule, TCSG, TCLG, and public input will be finalized following the council's June mini-planning session. Decisions are made on the survey, and funding for consultant contracts have been appropriated by the council. The first seven items, talking about the interim report, the vision statement, I guess well, the public survey is, would be, that would be another one which could be now up in the air. The consultants, the public outreach in terms of getting Ross more involved and making sure we get information out, the way the future TSG, TCSG meetings will be structured so there'd be, so they'd be very clear to TCSG what the purpose of the meeting is, and provide council updates don't change. So I bristle a little bit at characterizing this as a restart or anything like that, because this is not a restart. The interim report is designed to capture where we've come so far. What has to be done next is how we take what's in the interim report and then take that out to the community and find out whether, what changes, further changes need to be made. And I completely agree with you that we need to have the engagement of this new consultant to give us a good idea of how to do that. I think that can be done, we can have that discussion with him or her in July, we can have it with him or her in August. You know, we need to sit down with them. But what I think is important is the council authorize Noel to go ahead and try to contract with that person. And then that the, either the Town Center Committee or the TCLG sit down with him or her and figure out, okay, how are we going to, how are we going to deal with this going forward? And obviously with staff, to figure out what the, to do exactly what you've said. But I really don't want us talking about this as a restart, because that, in many ways, demeans what's been done so far by a lot of people who've spent a lot of time on this process, and I don't want to do that. I think that a lot of good work has been put in, like a lot of great public input is reflected in that work. And I think what we now need to do is do a much better job of communicating what's happened and making sure that the future public engagement process truly informs people and solicits their input in an effective way.
So quickly, I certainly didn't mean to, in any way demean the work of the folks who have put in a lot of time getting us to this stage, so I hope that wasn't the way anyone would have taken that. And then secondly, you pointed out that there is a public process that's already teed up beyond getting the interim report out, and I would certainly be supportive of, it's not just getting the interim report out, it's hearing back from people what they think of the interim report. With that, Jane, Mike, and Debbie.
Well, I agree with Dan on the fact that a lot of good work has come out of the Stakeholders' Committee already, and we've been working on this a long time. Remember, Phase One started well over a year ago, and worked for a while, and then Phase Two. So a lot of good work has been done. I think it's important to keep the momentum going, and not to rush things through, but to keep steadily, because we also have a moratorium. We can't keep rolling, and it's important to get the work done. And so I look forward to having a consultant who can look at the body of work, because there's a lot, to pull it together and use Seth Harry's interim report to get us the momentum going again.
Mike and Debbie?
I'm going to shift gears. If you're going to talk about the same thing, Debbie, go ahead, because I've got a different type of question.
Let's try to resolve this one.
Yeah, so that's what I said. Go ahead, and I'll pass up.
Okay. So...
So the first thing, Ms., is in the selection of the consultant, there needs to be an appropriate level of transparency to that person and their background because we cannot have another situation where there's significant concern in the community about their appropriateness. So that would be the first thing. And I'm happy to dive deep with anybody at any time about how you can do that. It doesn't need to be turned into a, you know, 42-person decision, but I do think that that is, there's going to be integrity in that element upfront. So that would be the first piece. The second piece for me, to have more confidence in the vision and the direction that we're taking this, is for there also to be a look or a relook at that original document, the Town Center Community Engagement Strategy. It was dated back in February. I don't remember the exact date at this point. I think I've referenced it a few times. But is that the right charter still? Do we have the right groups? Do we have the right governance? Do we have the right milestones? Do we have the right reporting? Because again, if this person's coming in and that is still sort of the founding body of work and it isn't sufficient or it isn't right, then we need to make sure that we're looking at that as well. And then finally, you hear it all the time and I'd have to say this is part where we're on very symbiotic with Bart Dawson, is there has to be the right tools and the right reporting that comes into this too, that can make it easily understandable, predictable, we can lay out the dependencies and that's quite clear. Because that is going to be a critical success factor, not only just for the town centerpiece, but for the comp plan and for so many other components that come with it. So I would say the consultant, again to summarize, the consultant has to, there has to be some leader in that selection process, that I would actually like to see that consultant looking at the Town Center Original Community Engagement Strategy. I'd like to make sure that there again is expectations in terms of governance and tools and publications that are going to be used. And then finally, I feel very comfortable holding off on any votes or allocation of funding. I think we all know it's super important and we're going to be responsible about it, but the extent to which we temporarily put a hold on that and make sure that there is no question about funding the impact studies to a point where Chip is comfortable, then let's go with that.
Benson, you wish to on this topic with you? And then Dan?
I just wanted to just put out a few comments. I think, again, my perspective is that we've made a lot of progress in the past year and a half. Again, maybe not as smoothly as some people would like to see and some of the decisions and some of the decisions have, that have been made, again, may not be pleasing to everybody, but I think overall, I think we're pushing the ball forward. Having said that, you know, I think the important thing is not, too oftentimes people get too insular and I think it's important to have an outside set of eyes. I think it's a great idea to put a pause on this thing, have somebody else come in and just do a reality check, give us a different perspective as far as, yeah, this is, the process makes sense or the process doesn't make sense and this is what you might want to consider. So, you know, again, a lot of us have been doing this for a number of months and I like to think that we've all kept our objectivity, but sometimes, you know, I just want to, it's good to have a three-party come in and just give us a reality check. So I think that's good. I think Debbie brings up, Councilmember Bertin, sorry, brings up a lot of good points and I understand that, you know, there's been one person that Noel that you've, you have in mind. I don't know if there's anybody else or if you're going to be looking outside, other possible consultants, but, you know, it might be worth watching to see, cast your net a little bit wider to see if there's other people so that, you know, when you, when the selection is made, at least you have something to compare. I don't know how wide that net needs to be cast.
Yeah.
I don't think we need to go that far. I think that we cannot, we cannot sit there and question everything that's been done and question, we've got 42 women and men who have spent a lot of time getting up to speed on this process and we as a city have a lot invested in having educated them on this process. We have nine members of the liaison group who have spent a lot of time getting up to speed on this process and have done a lot of work on this. I fully understand the need to make sure that how we engage with those 42 people, how we engage with those nine people, how we actually engage with the public is something that needs to be improved and we need another set of eyes to tell us how to do that. One of the reasons that we decided not to continue working with Three Squared is that we weren't satisfied, because that was specifically that aspect of the project where some of us felt that we were looking to Three Squared to provide us with the expertise on and given everything that's been said, we can see where that's got us at this point. So that's why a lot of us, or several of us felt that we needed to go in a different direction. I am perfectly satisfied to leave it up to staff to hire consultants and, or at least come back and make the recommendation to us to come up with consultants because that's, I recognize there's a limit to what this council can do and we need to, just like we rely upon Noel to pick his employees, the employees for the city, we have to rely upon the city manager at that level to pick the consultants. But we just, we have to, we have to recognize that we have spent now nine months on something that will produce a very valuable interim report and our challenge now is to figure out what to do with that. Our challenge is not now to go back and review everything that we've done and start second guessing whether it's the right thing with the stakeholders, with the right thing with the liaison group, whether it's the right thing to have a consultant, whether it's the right thing to be talking about streets. I mean, we can't, we need to, we need to build on what we have and not, and not start this thing anew. I don't see the sky falling, Debbie, the way I think you've characterized it and I'm not, I know you're going to say I'm putting words in your mouth and I don't mean to do that and so I'm not, I'm not suggesting that those were your words, but I see, I'm very supportive of what Bruce has suggested, which is getting in the consultant to guide us on what we do with the interim report and how we engage with the public and how we deal with the stakeholders and how we deal with the liaison group. I'm very supportive of that, but to have someone come in and say, well, should there be stakeholders? Should there be a liaison group? You know, should we have 32 stakeholders? Should we have 75 stakeholders? I don't really want to go down that road.
That's not, I have to, that's not what I'm advocating, but what I would say is the extent to which we cannot look at what we've originally set out and said, is this appropriate going forward? It's not a function of throwing away what's been done or disregarding, it's just the opposite. It's about looking and saying, we have come this far, how can we make it better? Does it need to be better? So again, everything that you talked about in terms of stakeholder groups and the liaison groups, et cetera, that's part of that document. That's part of what is in there. And that's all I'm saying is have this person look at it and say, if your objectives are clearly defined for, you know, what you want to achieve, do you have the roadmap there? I'm not advocating throw it out, keep it. I'm saying get somebody in and say this is going to get you where you need to go.
Benson. And Mike, just give me the faintest hint of where you're going so I can understand when I can finally bring it in, okay?
We talk consultants, okay? There are two consultants there. I think that we're talking about the consultant that just prides up the package that Seth gives us. I don't think Seth, when I look at his portfolio, is going to give us the product other than heavy, intense, dense transit-oriented development. I don't see that in his portfolio to give us that, what I'm seeing, the village atmosphere that is, that is supportive of a density that our level of services, that our citizens are comfortable with, that our facilities can provide a level of service.
Okay.
I just want to go back to the issue of the process that we've been talking about. Frankly, it sounds like that we're probably saying the same thing in essence. I mean, I think there is a consensus, at least from what I can gather, that it's probably a good thing to take a little bit of pause. I am not talking about a reset, okay? I think a lot of work has been done. I've been, you know, with Councilmember Rahm and you, deputy mayor, and all the other folks on the stakeholders and liaison group, we've put a lot of time in. There's been a lot of progress made. I don't, a lot of good stuff has come out of the work that's been had. So I think, but a pause, just having a look at it and again, getting a second eye and a reality check, that this is the right process going forward, I think everything is, we're focused on going forward with what we've done. I think again, I may be over optimistic, but it sounds like that's what we're all talking about and so I hope that's where we are, so.
I think I'm hearing consensus around that and there's, what I feel is a relatively minor disagreement, Debbie and Dan, about exactly how deep that goes into what the process or what the, what the shape of things is in the future, but I don't feel like that's fundamentally changing the proposed direction here.
The immediate question you've got to answer because Debbie raised it is whether we're going to authorize Noel to hire another consultant to go through this review process in whatever form it's going to take. That's the first thing that has to happen and, I mean, I would strongly encourage the council to appropriate, I think you've asked 25,000 for that. I think it's appropriate to, you know, delay the Seth Harry contract until we know what we're going to ask him to do, I think based upon what the council has said. I think that makes sense, but I do think we should, and I don't think it makes sense to ask to approve hiring ECM or whatever they're called for the survey, but I think we need to authorize Noel to hire a consultant and then work with the, initially with the Town Center Committee and staff to address what's been said here tonight.
Okay. And I see nods around.
Question, does the, Seth, will we get the interim report regardless of what we do tonight?
Yes. We don't need this appropriation regarding Seth Harry to get the interim report finished.
Great.
Okay. And Mike's point's a little different, it's a little bit down, I mean, that's one step down the road, which is as this consultant looks at things, is, you know, is it within that person's scope to say, is Seth Harry the right person or not?
Well, that's, I think we should delay the Seth Harry contract because again, I have a question about whether his portfolio, I want to reiterate that. And I'd like to, it's a port by the council, have the city manager give us options to replace Seth Harry with someone whose portfolio is focused on that village atmosphere type of community. The low, to put it quantitatively, that low intense development.
So I think you were wise in suggesting that your question fell into a different category than the rest of the conversation we're having here. So again, let's hold that for a minute if we could. To you, Terry.
I agree with where we're headed. I do appreciate that people have worked really hard and the product process may not be perfect, but it certainly has a lot of value and I'd like to continue to build on that. I'd also like to reiterate something, Dan, so that I feel very strongly that it is appropriately the city manager's decision to make the decision about which consultant would best be able to fill the role, which I think Scott has ably described what we need next. I think that's appropriately described and I certainly think that it's the staff's responsibility to find that next consultant.
I'd be willing to make a motion.
So I'm pleased with that. I just want to make sure that we know what needs to go into the motion in order for it to capture what we've talked about and feels a bit to me like you want some input from staff before you actually make that.
Well, no, I think primarily what we need, so the agenda bill had teed up an appropriation of 87,900. I think we just need the 25,000 to move ahead with vetting and hiring a consultant to advise on how to best go forward and do that assessment. So what we might do, what I might suggest is you've got a proposed motion in the agenda bill right now, but I think it would instead say appropriate $25,000 from the 2014 general fund surplus for the Town Center Development, let's see, for Town Center Development Community Engagement Services. So it's sort of just grabbing number three above from the list of proposed contract items.
And you'd basically be postponing the EMC?
Yeah, and so tonight you would not be taking the action on EMC, funding for the survey or the additional funding for the next round of Seth Harry. We will wait on those.
And then just so everybody is aware, I'm intending to come back to the questions, the one that Mike has raised and the question of the mitigation fee work in, for the, on conversation to this happening immediately. Okay?
I'd like to make a motion. I move to appropriate $25,000 from the 2014 general fund surplus for the Town Center Development and Community Engagement Services.
All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Mitigation fees or Seth Harry? Flip of the coin?
Mitigation.
Mitigation fees, all right.
Impact fees.
Impact fees, thank you. So Chip, there clearly was fairly broad support. I didn't, we didn't get an actual count here on council for moving ahead with this. Just a quick thumbs up, thumbs down, interest in moving ahead with this because I think I heard it pretty broadly. Okay, so there's at least four.
Yeah.
And, so Chip, can you craft a motion for us that gets us there or should someone else be trying to craft that?
I can help.
You don't need that.
Well, I don't think we need, we don't need a motion yet. Hold the motion because what's going to happen is we're going to report back to you on impact fees from the first phase of the study and then at that point you can authorize us to go forward with the second phase and we can identify for you what that entails.
Better yet. But I think the sense of the council, what the mayor's trying to communicate, Chip, is that we want to do this, so we trust you'll find some drawer that you're hiding some money in the.
The secret drawer, Chip.
Wouldn't this come out of the professional services that we already allocated?
Well, that was the plan, but what happened is that money with what we see going to the Town Center Engagement Process will be drawn down below the amount needed for impact fees. So the original plan was to use some of that for impact fees and that's why we're having to look, yeah, that's why we're having to look for it, for something else.
Okay. To Mike's question of whether there should be a reevaluation of Seth Harry at this point in the process. Mike, I think you've made the point that you think he comes with an agenda that you're uncomfortable with. Others who want to weigh in on this, Dan?
I don't think Seth comes with an agenda. I think Seth made it very clear to us in his Phase One report what his thinking was on the Town Center and his council unanimously supported going forward with Phase Two. And I think, as Scott would be the first one to tell you, Seth and I have had some very strong disagreements on stuff and no one would say I'm the biggest Seth Harry fan in the world, but I have no question about his professionalism and about his expertise and what he has demonstrated to me at least is that he knows this subject matter and that he will provide us with the information that we need and he will eventually provide us with code language which reflects the direction of the council and that will get us where we need to go. So he can do everything we need him to do and I don't see him at this point being anyone we need to suggest needs to be, you know, put out again for consideration of replacement.
Benson.
I was going to say that, you know, I again served with a few of the other council members in the selection process of Seth Harry. We interviewed two other firms and I did not get the sense, I still don't have the sense that he has any hidden agenda. One of the things that we were looking for and which he clearly has the expertise and experience was on form-based codes and prescriptive.
experience, was on form-based codes and prescriptive zoning, and he brings that expertise. And so, I think, I feel very comfortable going forward with him. I think it's good that we are tightening down on the issues of deliverables and also giving him more specific timeframes, because he is, he has other clients, and sometimes, I think sometimes things did not get done in a timely manner, which they should have. But I think we just need to basically make sure that he understands what our expectations are going forward. But I feel that he has the competence and certainly the expertise in this area.
Jane?
I'd just like to also reiterate my confidence in Seth Harry. He listened to the stakeholders, too. He's, he's a huge expert nationwide, but he really listened to the stakeholders, I believe, and I don't think it's fair to judge him from drawings on his website that he's done for other communities when he's listened to other, other people's needs. So I, I think he's a good listener, he is a, he is an expert, he knows his stuff, and I have confidence in him.
And Debbie?
Yeah, I mean, I, if the checks and balances and the way this thing is set up have worked, then if he were to have an agenda, they would be primarily removed, meaning there's, there's stakeholders, there's liaison groups, there's multiple checkpoints in there. So the extent to which there is communication, there is minutes, there's, you know, everything that we've talked about for many, many meetings, you know, I think that it would be fine. And frankly, what I've seen of his work has been very professional, so I'm going to be comfortable going forward with him, particularly in the context of having, you know, greater rigor in the deliverables and all the support that comes around it.
I'm going to take a turn here for a second, Mike, and point out that in the, this sort of wearing campaign hat for just a moment, but to alert you to something I was alerted to yesterday. My opponent running for election pointed out to me that I have a connection with Seth Harry. This came as news to me. I did not know that I had a connection with Seth Harry, but my opponent said that that would potentially become a campaign issue, and so I thought best to figure out what, what was up with that. So I will tell you all that I moved to my neighborhood, same time a family moved to my neighborhood from West Seattle, and that family and my family became friends, because we had kids the same age. Tragically, some years later, the father in that family died in a motorcycle accident, and the mother in that family moved to the East Coast, and coincidentally, one of our candidates for council moved into that house, Tracy Grambois, so another weird connection here. But the person who died in the motorcycle accident was Greg Harry, a brother of Seth Harry, and I had no idea that they were brothers, but, and I never met Seth Harry, so I do have a connection with Seth Harry, although a very circuitous one, but I just wanted to let everybody know that, because I've been told that it's a potential issue. So, for your benefit, you now know. To you, Mike.
That's interesting. It was extremely sad when that happened, I remember that vividly, that was something. It's not about professionalism or expertise, it's, you know, if somebody is skilled in making bread, and they're not going to be as skilled as grow on a steak, if that analogy holds true. I didn't see anything, I didn't see anything in Seth's portfolio that would indicate that he's going to be passionate, if you will, at low intense, low density, village-type development. You know, he has a lot of professional, superb, transit-oriented development projects under his belt, and that's great, that's great. But from the uprising that has gotten us here, that path, transit-oriented development, I don't think is where the community wants to go, and to ask Seth to, to do a different, different projects than he's typically comfortable with, I think is not appropriate. Or, we could better serve the community in getting somebody who's, who's expertise and professionalism wise with, is, is equal to Seth's expertise and professionalism, but in a different category.
What else? Okay. I, I think I clearly heard the way the council is to continue with Seth Harry. I'll just ask for a thumbs up, thumbs down on that. So, Terry, thumbs up means continue, and thumbs down means stop. All right. I think that completes this. We've gone for quite a while on this. We were at 9:13, we'll come back at 9:23, recess.
Meeting will return to order. We move now to Agenda Bill 5088, acquisition and lease purchase financing of a midi pumper fire truck. Chip Porter, welcome.
Good evening. It's time to buy new fire truck. It's replacing one that was 31 years old, 1984, as I recall, quite long in the tooth. This was planned, long been planned, it's incorporated into your 2015, 2016 adopted budget in terms of its purchase price, and then its annual debt service for a nine-year period beginning in '16. We got the best possible cost, as we've done in prior years, back in '07 and '12. We piggybacked using the Houston Galveston Area Council in a local purchase agreement or contract, and secure a significant discount on the price there. We also, consistently with what we've done in the past, we take advantage of a 4% this time around prepayment discount, we pay for it all in advance. I don't get that kind of return on my investments here, and so it's just, it's a no-brainer. What else should I mention here? We have, once again, in terms of the financing arm, is Municipal Asset Management, they've done all of our lease purchase agreements on our fire vehicles, they're consistently the lowest by far, and there's nothing that's different this time around compared to 2012 or 2007. If you're interested, when we purchased a midi pumper back in '07, that cost was $252,000. When you look at the annual increase over the past eight years, up to currently, which $341,000, that's a 4% annual compounding growth factor. That's pretty consistent for fire apparatus. With that, what's before you is ordinance 15-13, that authorizes, authorizes Noel and myself to execute two agreements, the purchase agreement with Pierce Manufacturing, who actually builds the midi, the midi pumper, and then, in essence, a lease purchase agreement or installment purchase contract with Municipal Asset Management. With that, happy to take council questions, Kerry's here to answer, answer legal-related questions, and our fire chief is here to answer questions, concerns about warranty or about the, the fire apparatus itself. Councilmember Zero.
Why do we call it midi, not mini?
Midsize.
Midsize, okay. I've always forever wanted to know that. You, on your pastry, exhibit one, you talk about purchase, 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 is that lease purchase?
Yes.
Okay.
The only exceptions are fire rescue truck. We used bond proceeds to purchase that.
Right, and you know how I felt about that, or do you want me to remind you?
You don't, I wasn't a big fan of that way of purchasing, but it matters not at this point.
Okay, we won't talk about that. You say, at the bottom of that page, you talk about surplus of, this might be for the chief, actually, this is for the chief, surplus of two old midi pumpers. So how many midi pumpers do you have in your inventory?
For the record, Steve Hyman, Fire Chief. We, currently, we have three. We have the two 1984s, which this will be replacing, and we'll be down to two.
Okay, so you'll be down to two, and that will be your, that will be your?
That is the number we have, yes.
Your long-term?
There'll be one at '91, and one at '92.
Okay, I, I think that's fantastic, that, that's a great money-saving thing to do.
I agree.
And I assume one's kept at '91 and another's at '92?
That is correct.
So do we have extra space in '91 or '92?
No, with the station build, one of those green pumpers has been kept outdoors, up at Station 91 in the back parking lot, with the addition of the rescue With the addition of the rescue truck and other apparatus, this will actually help us so that everything will be kept indoors.
Okay. Right, that's all I have.
Other questions? Dan, and Jane.
Just following up on something my guest. So when you surplus the two Mids, do you have any sense of whether you'll get anything from them? I think the last time, didn't we surplus that off to some volunteer fire department somewhere?
We will get the minimum for that. More than likely, because of their design, they'll go to some small urban department that does wildland firefighting. That's what they're best capable of.
But you have no idea at this point?
Not at this point. We will send them to auction more than likely. We have not, or we will, actually, what we did with the last rescue truck is we sent it out and advertised to see if we got any bites on that, and that brought in a lot more money than we've been getting previously.
Good. And Steve, I had asked you this morning about the warranty, it's, because all it says in the Agenda Bill, it's a standard one-year warranty, which struck me as a little bit light, given that even on a car, you can usually get at least two years on a warranty, and I realize this isn't a car, but if you could just sort of explain, is that standard? What other communities are getting? Have you checked around on that?
It is standard for the manufacturer, and it's more of a blanket warranty that covers anything that's not specifically called out or listed. Pierce does not cover anything that comes with its own warranty from the manufacturer. Batteries, for instance, that they supply on the rig, but they don't cover the warranty on that. The major items that they do call out in that, and that we're concerned about, is the engine has a five-year, 100,000-mile warranty, transmission five-year, 100,000 miles, the pump, five-year warranty, the tank has a lifetime warranty, and then Pierce provided a body warranty which covers all of the compartments and most of the other components that don't have an individual warranty for 10 years.
Okay, so that, so when it says a one-year warranty, that's sort of a
That's in the very front of it, but it doesn't, it's just a blanket that I, to be honest, it covers anything that they didn't specifically list.
And then there's a provision in the Pierce agreement, Section 5, I believe, which talks about, it's on Page 5 of the Agenda Bill, Page 5 of the Agenda Bill, talks about future changes. So the way this is set up, as I understand it, we're actually going to get delivery nine months after we pay for this, and what this seems to say is that if they decide to make any model changes during those nine months, we get to pay for that. Do we have any, I think the same issue came up on the rescue truck. Do we have any sense of being exposed there for potential extra costs?
I don't believe that we do, but I think that, again, is to cover items such as this time, or this time around, we had to go with an international chassis, just because the chassis we'd used on the other Midi isn't available anymore. And so if they run into problems in their manufacturing, that suddenly manufacturer doesn't supply it and they have to go with a different product, it would cover those costs. But I don't foresee that as being an issue.
Okay. And then the last question is more for Kerry. And this refers to the indemnity on Page 12, which, as indemnities go, is about as awful as I've seen in a long time. What it basically says is that if there's a problem with one of these trucks, and that, for example, causes someone to be injured, or there's property damage as a result, and someone decides to sue Pierce, then we have to defend Pierce unless we can demonstrate that there was, that the only cause of this was Pierce's negligence. So if our driver, firefighter, did something wrong and was 5% at fault, then technically we still have to indemnify Pierce for the resulting damages. So I had asked Kerry this morning whether that was discussed with Pierce, and, because it just seems extremely one-sided the way it is.
And Deputy Mayor Glass, I don't disagree with you. It is very lopsided in favor of Pierce as drafted. It is standard boilerplate in their agreement, and I will note that I did compare it to the purchase agreement that this council approved in 2012, and it is the exact same form. If you note, in the lower right-hand corner, there is a footer that says the boilerplate form was revised in September, September 10th of 2010. So it looks like Pierce has not changed their language. Because of that, I did not ask them to specifically change it, although I would anticipate that they would not be inclined to do so. However, I did specifically ask Municipal Asset Management to revise their indemnification language, and I'm still waiting to hear back from General Counsel for Municipal Asset Management regarding that. But I also wanted to let the council know that as drafted, the ordinance that we are, as staff seeking approval of, Ordinance Number 15-13, Exhibit 4 in your packet, for this Agenda Bill, it is written to approve the documents in substantially the form attached, and that is intended to create the flexibility needed to capture any changes that we would hope to get for an indemnification provision.
And I appreciate that, Kerry. I just would hope that, in spite of maybe the council's not being as careful back in three years ago, whenever we did the rescue truck, in looking at this, that staff see what you can do on something like this. I would think that when we're dealing with a 300-plus-thousand-dollar purchase, that we're entitled to have a discussion with Pierce to say that there should at least be some sort of comparative negligence standard rather than a sole negligence standard.
And I appreciate your point there. We can certainly ask Pierce if they'll remove the word "sole" preceding negligence, and I can let the council know whether they agree to that change. Again, I have some doubts about whether they would, but it's certainly worth an ask, so I can follow up and make that ask.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, someone else I think was, put their hand up, and I don't remember who. Jane? No?
Oh, I did, but Dan asked my questions.
All right. Benson?
I just want to follow up with Deputy Mayor Grouse. I mean, he and I actually had some similar issues with the language of the contract, and we shared that with our city attorney. I guess the point I hear is that, and I've heard this numerous times, that the contract is pretty much what it is, and you sort of have to take it or leave it. And I guess, just echoing on Deputy Mayor's point, going forward, I would just hope that at least we make a good faith effort to try to get these forms changed. I mean, I think we probably have some leverage, but again, you know, I think we should not just accept their language as is. And I think we definitely owe it to our community to try to push back and to try to limit our exposure to the extent we can.
Anyone else?
And there's one other point, Kerry, that I think I mentioned in the email to you, that hopefully, if you get stuck with this language, we'll clear it with our insurer before we sign off on it. I know that we had this issue with the parking lease, that we cleared that with the insurer before we agreed to that indemnity. And I would trust that we would do the same thing here.
Yeah, that's a good point. We'll be sure to do that.
I will, and also to give the council further assurance, the prior apparatus that was purchased in 2012 is covered by our insurer, WCIA, and because of the value of the vehicle, we actually pay extra to have full replacement cost coverage. So it's broader, more protective coverage than what we carry for other types of vehicles in our fleet. It's because of the high value of the vehicle.
But that's property damage. I'm more concerned about the liability, so, on this one. Probably damage, that's great to hear, but this would go to the liability or the policy?
We can verify that with WCIA, and they also have provided proof of our coverage for the companies that we're contracting with or proposing to Pierce and Municipal Asset Management, but we can verify that they would cover this type of language if Pierce does not agree to take out the word "sole" prior to negligence. And, you know, this is maybe a crude analogy, but I sort of liken it to a consumer trying to purchase a vehicle from a major manufacturer such as Toyota, and if they have a standard warranty that's six years, 60,000 miles, whichever comes first, if a consumer, you know, wants more protection, usually they have to pay for it, or simply it's a take-it-or-leAVE-it proposition, they can buy another car.
Any else, councilmembers? All right, motion perhaps would be in order then, on Page 2.
I'd like to suspend City Council Rules of Procedure 5.2 and adopt with one and final reading Ordinance Number 15-13, authorizing the city manager to execute the purchase agreement between the City of Mercer Island and Pierce Manufacturing, Inc., for the acquisition of one Midi Pumper fire truck for a total cost, including all applicable discounts and sales tax, of $341,294.64, and further authorizing the city manager to execute the master tax-exempt installment purchase agreement with Municipal Asset Management, Inc., to finance the acquisition of said fire truck.
Second?
Discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. I was going to go to Steve Heitman.
Oh, yes, yeah, I wanted to just, while we've got the chief here, he was going to give a quick report on how the 5th of July went, and most importantly, on the lack of incidents.
Very good, thank you. As most of you hope know, we increased staffing for the day of the July 4th. We were predicting that we could possibly have more responses than normal due to the dry conditions, and so we staffed a crew for that entire day. We took other precautions, such as from 4:00 PM or 16:00 on, we did not transport patients to the hospital. We utilized AMR for that function so that we could keep staff on the island. During the day, we ended up running six firework-related calls. Three of them were what were considered brush fires, but very small, except for one Arva Vida Hedge that didn't survive, and the other three were bark fires. Those incidents were firework-related. They, when the crews got on scene, there were fireworks in the area. As they were pulling up, some people were scattering. They were able to quickly extinguish any fires and not have any major issues from that. Just to give you a little bit, though, three of those incidents took place at one address, and out of the other three, two were at another single address, and a third was at neighbor's house hours afterwards. So very concentrated area. I think the public responded well to the safety message that we sent out and did not go crazy with their fireworks. I think they were very, very safe under these conditions, and these were dry conditions. Calls were up all over the region. If you want, I can give you those numbers, but for us, fireworks-related, it only added six fireworks-related calls. I'm happy to say that we did not have a single EMS call for fireworks. Any questions?
What's the historical perspective of your calls?
Last year, we had one brush fire call, and five years prior to that, we did not have any fireworks-related calls.
My only question is, what are you thinking after you've had a brush fire call and a second brush fire call, and you keep setting off fireworks and end up with a third brush fire call? You've got to think that maybe it's time to call it quits for the evening.
I think I'm as relieved as everybody that there were no incidents, but I think there's also something to be gained from the dialogue that has been started in the community, which is there are a number of people who do have a concern about the permitting of fireworks on Mercer Island by private individuals, and I think we can see that in terms of the emails that came into our council boxes. I think we can see it in terms of what has gone on in terms of social media and even to a certain extent, the reporter. So what I would like us to keep in mind when it comes time to put together the survey is that we consider next, I believe it's January, that we would, January, February, Q1, I believe it is, of '16, that we would look to introduce a question about the extent to which the community would like to see the permitting of private fireworks on Mercer Island going forward.
All right, are you looking for council action on that right now? Because
Well, it's that we have that, we make sure that that gets, you know, that that's part of the agenda and discussion when we come to the survey in January. And there's no, I don't think, a formal vote or anything.
Remind me of the, Chip, remind us of the timing on preparing that agenda, or the survey.
Yeah, we usually conduct it in January, February typically, and so, but we always engage the council at some point prior to that, probably in December timeframe, about what kinds of special questions do you want to add?
Okay, so that'll be the time. So we'll keep it on the list.
Well, wait a minute, wait a minute.
On the list of things to consider putting on the survey?
Okay, I'm sure, I'm sure you would. When is that formal time that councilmembers give you the list? I've never, I don't recall being active in the development of that list.
In the past, we've talked to the mayor and deputy mayor.
Okay, well then, I guess this year, you're going to talk to the whole council. So why don't you, Deputy Mayor, why don't you send me, send the council an email on what questions we'd like to be entertained at the survey, and then that would be a separate agenda item, I guess, where we do a thumbs up and thumbs down. Is that what I'm hearing?
If you're on the council in January.
If you're on the council, well, you know I'm not going to, you know I'm not going to. Is that what I'm hearing?
I'm perfectly fine with the council having, yeah, a weigh-in on the questions, absolutely. So
I'll look for the email.
One other point, there's an interesting exchange of emails over the last few days involving several citizens who pointed out that Bainbridge, Douglas County, and I think Claillam County all went and prohibited fireworks at the last minute in response to what they perceived as fire danger, and then the governor made an announcement, much like Kerry had said to us, that the lawyers had told him that he cannot prohibit fireworks, even if he wanted to. But it was interesting, because Bainbridge at least has an ordinance which gives the city manager, or maybe it's the fire chief, the authority to ban fireworks if they perceive there to be a fire danger, as might have been the case this year. And I'm not suggesting that's what you would have determined, Steve, but that would have at least given you the authority, given Noel the authority to make that determination. And Kerry raised the point in the email exchange, whether that's illegal, that ordinance is enforceable, or you can actually act under it. But I thought it was, I thought it was an intriguing question to tee up before the council is, you know, it may arguably be that if you pass that ordinance, and at least it's on the books for a year, that you can make the argument that you've satisfied the one-year requirement. I, first to acknowledge, it's a stretch, but it's an argument. But I think it, I think giving, at least giving our staff the authority under certain exigent circumstances to protect the community and not feel like we're completely helpless, if, you know, if the fire chief says, we got a real problem here, then I think it's worth having that authority on our books. And worse comes to worse, someone after the fact manages to challenge it, but at least we might have significantly cut down on fireworks by just, you know, exercising the authority that we purport to have. So I thought that was a good exchange and would encourage the council to consider having staff at some point this year come back to us with a Bainbridge-type ordinance so we can, we can consider.
Can we put that on the list of potential January planning session for whoever's that on council? Okay.
Once again, I don't see the problem that we're trying to solve. I mean, we've had, there were no EMS calls.
I, you know, Mike, I'm not, I'm not, I don't want to guess what next year is going to be or the year after. I just want to make sure that we at least have something we can point to if who's ever running the city at that point says, you know, we really need to do something here. So I just want to make sure we have something on the books, and we have something to point to. That would be my view of it.
Okay, I think we are done with that topic. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Steve.
We move to Agenda Bill 5087, adoption of 2014 Washington City's We move to Agenda Bill 5008-7, adoption of the 2014 Washington Cities Electric Code, WCEC, first reading.
This is exciting stuff.
It is.
It's gonna be shocking.
Well, get a charge out of there. Welcome, Don Cole.
Good evening. For the record, Don Cole, the unofficial. As you see, the next item is adoption of the 2014 Washington Cities Electrical Code. Periodically, the state law requires local governments to update, updated versions of the construction codes. At this time, the state mandates updating of the 2014 NEC, National Electrical Code. This proposed ordinance adopts that code via the Washington Cities Electrical Code. As has been done previously for the simple code updates, staff recommends that council move to suspend the City Council Rules of Procedure 5.2, requiring a first and second reading of all ordinances, and adopt the 15C-13, the MCC Title 17, construction codes, thereby complying with the State of Washington's mandate. Alternatively, we could set this ordinance for a second reading and adoption on August 3, 2015.
Boy, short and sweet.
That's really simple, yeah. The state says you gotta do it.
Sure put you on the consent calendar.
Questions? Debbie.
Just curious, I mean, what's the timeframe we have for approving this? Or I guess it's us and every community out there.
Well, it's actually, in effect, the NEC's in effect statewide right now. So, we're, I think the second city of the Russian Cities Electrical Code, there's, I think there's like 11 cities now that are members of the Russian Cities Electrical Code, pretty much all the cities that have their own electrical departments adopt the Russian Cities Electrical Code, and we're the second city that's going to council. So, we're one of the first of the cities. But it's already in effect. So, timeframe is yesterday.
How nice of them to ask.
Mike?
I'd like to make a motion when you're ready, Mr. Mayor.
Any other questions before we do that? All right. Head at it.
I'd like to set ordinance number 15C-13 for a second reading and adoption on August 3, 2015.
Is there a second? Motion dies for lack of a second. Do we have another motion?
I move to suspend the City Council Rules of Procedure 5.2, requiring a first and second reading of all ordinances, and adopt ordinance number 15C-13, amending Mercer Island City Code Title 17, construction codes, as required by the State of Washington.
We always used to do that as two separate motions in the past. Do you still want to continue doing that? We always used to suspend the rules as one motion, then we used to do the ordinance as a second motion.
Matt, I missed a comment on that on Chip's.
Yeah, it was, we had two agenda bills that came forward with two different ways of doing it this time.
I missed a comment on that on Chip's, but yeah, I forgot, and somebody slap Chip's hand for that, please.
I withdraw my original motion and make a new motion.
There's been no second, so you can do that, right? Okay.
I move to suspend the City Council Rules of Procedure 5.2, requiring a first and second reading of all ordinances.
Discussion.
I'd like to talk to this.
Go ahead.
You know, I, I do this all the time, kind of a on principle or formality thing, but I think there's real argument to vote against the suspension. My expertise is not in electrical code. I didn't have the, sorry, commitment to read all the electrical code or understand all the ins and outs, nor did I seek guidance from my electrical friends, not to question what you've presented to us, but it's just part of doing my due diligence as a council member. So, I would ask that we, that we do not accept the suspension as a point of transparency and a point of opportunity to give those people who are electrical experts, passionate about electrical stuff, et cetera, give them the time to maybe review it and maybe bring up issues, be that inconsistencies or shortcomings either to the, of being too restrictive or not restrictive enough, so that we can then make a real, then have increased confidence that we're approving the right thing to do, making the right decision.
Any other discussion? All right. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Jane, you want to?
Yes. I move to adopt ordinance number 15C-13, amending MIC C Title 17, construction codes, as required by the State of Washington.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Don, thank you.
Thank you.
Let's see, we move to other business, council member absences. There are none this evening. Are there any upcoming of which we should be aware?
Just a reminder, I will be gone next week. No, not next week, sorry, two weeks from now.
Okay. Any others? Okay. Planning schedule?
The only thing I'd point out, it was already pointed out during our discussion on town center, but I just want to emphasize the point, and that is with, with the approach we're taking to the town center work and assessing where we are and where we're going to go exactly after the interim report, I think it's quite likely that some of the dates in September where we have town center visioning currently set may shift, so I just want to make you aware of that. As, as we do this assessment and I did, and get a better feel for where the schedule is going to go, we'll keep you updated on that.
When do you, when do you sense that the moratorium is going to be teed up again?
Well, let's see if we've got it on here. I don't think we've plotted it on here yet, but I think what we talked about a couple of meetings ago was to not bring that at the last minute, but instead to tee that up in advance of, I think, December 15th is the date. I think it would expire, so the December 7th meeting would be, meeting would be the last opportunity barring an emergency meeting. So, I think what we'll want to do is do an assessment of where the town center work is in early to mid-fall, and then go from there in terms of planning on when to bring the moratorium back, if we need to bring it back. Because right now, I don't, I don't think we jumped to the conclusion that it's coming back.
Well, we're just looking for a placeholder. We're just looking for a placeholder. It's always easier to take something off the schedule than put it back in.
Yeah, I would, I would guess probably November.
No, I would strongly urge us not to put placeholders in here for the moratorium. That is, you're asking for trouble, Don, to do that. You gotta, you make that decision at the time that you get closer based upon what you are at that time. You don't, five months in advance, say, "We're already thinking about extending it." That's just, you're creating a legal risk for political purposes.
There's no legal risk there. I mean, there's no additional legal risk there. It's just planning for a moratorium, and you should have that on there so that it's not an emergency moratorium.
You're creating a legal risk for political purposes.
The political thing is that the emergency moratorium takes five votes, and the normal course of business takes four votes.
Okay. I'm moving to board appointments. I am offering, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So, I wanted to bring up, as you know, and I have shared with each of you primarily individually, my interest in having us look at a specific revision to the City of Mercer Island City Council Rules of Procedure, last updated, I believe, June 19th, 2006. I would like to see us review and include a social media policy for council members. I think this is to the benefit not only of council, but definitely to the community in terms of understanding how, when, where, and under what conditions we are representing our own views and are those of the council as a whole. So, I did spend some time, again, looking at the version from June 19th, 2006, and I would like to see that added and ideally expedited. I realize we do have a heavy workload, but I also recognize the importance and use of social media by council and by our community is growing very, very quickly, and I think it's a very real need. So, I think what we need is what, two council members to support that for it to be attended.
Oh, but, I mean, I don't understand that because it's, we just finished a mini-planning session, and technically, anything like this to be added to the work plan would come through a planning session or a mini-planning session. So, to suddenly, after being told by our finance director that he doesn't have time to do performance audits, and I was told today by another staff member that they don't have time to answer questions, and then to, then to say that we're now going to, after being told the staff has stretched to the max and can't do anything on anything new, to suddenly throw this into the hopper without having it have the type of vetting we normally give during a planning session seems a little bit odd.
Well, I would, a couple of comments on that one. The first one is, I think Councilman Potler made a great point, which I think I even referenced again during that mini-planning session, and that is the extent to which we feel that we need to consistently prioritize and or reprioritize the agenda. I think that is the responsibility of the council. I'd be very concerned if we were only able to update our work plan once every six months. I don't think that would be particularly agile and responsive. And the second point is, is if you look at the current protocol and procedure, Section 3, 3.2, "Any item may be placed on council meeting agenda by any of the following methods: one, by the city manager; two, by two or more city, or council members; or three, by the mayor; and so forth." So, while I can appreciate we did have a mini-planning session, I do think that this has become an increasingly important topic. I'm certainly open to the discussion as to, A, what that policy is. I forwarded Kirkland's policy as a point of reference only, and two, certainly would be interested in hearing from fellow council members the extent to which they feel equally that there is an importance, if not urgency, to this too.
So, Councilmember Wong.
I know that I am supportive of the need to update our social media policy. I think when I went through the orientation with the AWC, this whole use of email and social media was discussed at a very high level, but there was a recognition that this is a changing area, and there was very little guidelines, at least, you know, a year and a half ago. So, I would, I think it's important to provide council members some guidance to the extent possible as far as how to communicate with the public and how the public should communicate with council members. As far as the workload, we do have a very heavy workload. I would be, I'd be interested in perhaps maybe having Noel take a look at how, if there's enough support for pursuing a policy change, or at least looking at a policy change on social media, having Noel take a look at the current calendar that he has with staff and to get back to us maybe by, you know, within a month, just to see what's possible. I don't know, you know, I mean, I don't, I don't feel that there's a sense of urgency.
Benson, you need two people to support. Either support it or you don't.
Oh, I do support it.
Okay, then tell, tell the city manager that you support.
I do support it.
And when it, it's on there.
There's a certain irony in you suggesting that this be done quickly when-
Well, no, it's, I mean-
I think, I think-
I just wanted to respect for the staff's time.
Yeah, Councilmember Wong.
I just wanted to respect for the staff's time, but I definitely support the idea of updating the policy.
I think the question is, what is the scope of work? And that I certainly couldn't speak to you either.
All right. So, we have two coun- oh, I'm sorry, we have two more people who want to comment on this. Terry.
I also join in, thinking this is an important thing for us to undertake, hopefully not too intrusive, but I agree with Councilmember Wong, see how much time and energy it takes. This is certainly something that's happening across all sectors, that it's not really updating the social media policies. I understand it's creating it. I mean, it's been a decade since we even looked at the city council, so I'm very supportive of exploring it, seeing if it's possible.
Yes, I agree. I think it's important and timely. I don't think it's urgent, but I also, it shouldn't take a huge amount of time, I would think. I think with the help of maybe AWC and some of the, what is it?
MRSC.
MRSC, yes, MRSC. We can look at best practices elsewhere and, you know, borrow from the best, but it shouldn't take all that much time, I shouldn't think.
Noel, you've been quiet. Yeah, I, what I, I guess I don't have an assessment at this point about the actual workload or what might have to shift to accommodate this. You've obviously got council support to add it to a future agenda, so what I'll do is talk with Ally and with Kerry, and we'll get assessed. I know other cities, a lot of other cities are trying to catch up on this and haven't gotten there yet. Kirkland is one who is out in front, and I think does have some policy that might be a model. So, we can, why don't we take a look at something like Kirkland's and what it involves, and what we might need to do to tailor it towards Mercer Island, and then we'll get it on a future agenda soon.
It occurs to me that, I think the last time I recall looking at this was Joy Johnston was our communications person, and we were doing some very early days looking at social media. Dan, I'm sorry, I interrupted.
Yeah, it's, I mean, obviously, it's the role of the council, so be it, but Debbie shared the Kirkland rules with me, and I, I will tell you that, and I don't know how many of the rest of you have seen them, but it is, I bristle at the notion that we can pass a policy which purports to tell council members what they can say, what they can't say, and what they must say, because it strikes me that that is, that is patently unconstitutional for, and would never, would never withstand legal challenge, that you can't tell an elected official what they can say, what they can't say, and what they must say. And that's what this, those rules purport to do. So, I, I think we enter into, you know, we're going to obviously come up with some recommendation, but we are heading into an area which I think is fraught with some real legal issues.
I agree with the deputy mayor. I mean, it's, it's got First Amendment issues written all over it, all over it. And, you know, it's, we just finished our planning session, you know? That was, you've been on board long enough, that's the time to bring that up, and we're going to have a planning session again in January, and that goes on the parking lot. We've got to have, but you get two, two council members to support like you have, it's on the agenda.
Okay. Done. I'm moving to board appointments. We have two that I am recommending this evening. There's a little bit of verbiage with, with them, but I think that's probably as much as I'll give, unless there are questions.
Brian's, this is his second. I noticed that he's not completed a full term or what's, is Brian on there?
Brian was reappointed.
It's Dave McAnus.
Yeah.
Jennifer Meacham, T N. I'd move to affirm the appointments of T N Tennyson, position two, expiring May 2018, on the Community Advisory Board, and Jennifer Meacham, position six, expiring May 2018, on the Planning Commission.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries, thank you. Councilmember Reports. Councilmember Wong, you want to start?
A couple of things. Actually, it's rare that this is going to happen, so actually, there's a pick meeting on Wednesday, July 8, and actually, they're asking this, every city council, every city that's a member to basically weigh in on a vote that is going to be taken on the 8th of July. The issue is whether or not they're seeking councils to basically vote, to encourage the King County Council to put the best starts for levy on the ballot in November. And for King County Council to do that, King County Council needs to make a decision by, I believe, July 20. So, S E A is basically seeking some indication from its members as to whether or not they want to encourage the King County Council to put it on the ballot. And that's all that's being asked. It's, we're not being asked to endorse the levy, we are simply being asked to encourage the King County Council to put it on the levy in November.
To put it on the ballot.
Yeah, I'm sorry, to put it on the ballot in November, thank you. So, that is what, the direction that they're asking, and so, depending on what the council decides tonight, Deputy Mayor Grousers, our representative, can vote and indicate that he is- that he has received guidance from the full council.
As our SCA representatives, do you have a recommendation to our council about what we ought to, what position we ought to take? Sort of unfairly forcing it back on you?
Well, you know, I think you've heard me before. I basically, I believe in the goals of the, what the levy intends to do, at least is trying to do as far as devoting assets to helping kids and hopefully changing the trajectory of their lives. And so, lofty goals, yes, but I believe that that's something that is money well-spent, as opposed to spending 70% of our county's budget on the criminal justice system. So, having said that, I would certainly urge the council to, urge the King County Council to put it on the ballot in November.
And I fully agree with that. My sense at the pick meeting is that this will be unanimous endorsement of this, that if Mercer Island was to say no, we would stand out like an amazing sore thumb on this one. And there's no reason to say no, because as Benson said, it's a great proposal.
Debbie and I might go.
Kirsten, because you commented on the goals of it, are you, are you comfortable in the how the goals get achieved?
And, good point. I have not delved into it in great detail. There was actually some materials that were provided, and the cities, the SCA members, some of the cities have actually started dialoguing with the county staff, raising questions, very good questions about governance issues, accountability, and so, those are questions that are being asked right now of the council, I'm sorry, of King County Executive and his staff. So, they want the cities to engage. And so, I know that we've made the decision that after the county votes, and assuming they put on the ballot, then apparently Cindy Goodwin has the direction to basically try to coordinate a time for the King County staff to come here to talk about the levy itself, and we can ask questions.
Okay.
Mike?
So, I mean, I support that, of course, but my question was, why you had one distribution of funds going from infant to 24 years old. It's certainly being sold as a, an early childhood development, yet it goes to distribute funds to 24-year-olds. And I find that one of the challenges that leaders have, political leaders have, is preventing monies from dissipating. So, if the objective is childhood development, you know, you're not a child at 16, 17, 18, up to 24. And I would just, I guess it's your call, but communicate with caution that dispersing the, the monies to that age group, up there to 18 to 24, that's, that's not, it doesn't sound like it's in the intent of what the levy is for.
Anyone else looking for a thumbs up on this? Thumbs down, thumbs up? Okay, very good. Benson, you've got your direction. Dan's got the direction. Benson, anything else?
No.
Toby?
We had a Parks Committee meeting last week, and we have some good news and some less good news, but I think it nets out to generally good news. The first was, unfortunately, Representative Sen worked very hard on our behalf, trying to get some funding into the budget to help us with our Caukens Point project. Unfortunately, while that did not go through, there is some funding that is coming through for ball field lights. Sparing the gory detail, it seems that both projects will be able to go forward, which I think is indicative of two very significant passions that the community has, both for structured recreation and also just the natural beauty. I personally am very passionate about Caukens Point, because we are every year losing a part of our island due to erosion, et cetera. We also spoke of summer celebration, and then Jane, Southeast 47th Trail, unfortunately got stuck on I-90 traffic, so couldn't make it, but I know that there was some good conversation.
Any else? Mike? Dan?
Kirsten, you shared with the full council the information on sixth, on the passenger ridership on the new bus route?
It will be included in the city manager's report this week.
Okay, well, just so council knows, I mean, Kirsten distributed to, this to you and to Benson and myself as a, as a metro committee, or whatever we're calling ourselves, the, that there was some, that the ridership has been very positive, and the numbers are forthcoming, but it's very encouraging to see the community response to this and what we're getting. There's also, I think, hopefully everyone saw the email from Association of Washington Cities on the various revenue changes down Olympia, some of which should produce some additional revenue for the city. Chip has done some analysis of that. I think there's probably some more to do, but we're getting more liquor tax, we're getting more sales tax, and something else. So, we're going to end up getting some additional monies, which is, which is great to see, because that was a priority of the AWC for the last several years, and they got struck out until this year. So, very encouraging.
Any else? Nope? Sure.
So, I did make it through Traffic to the Trails meeting. I just wanted to actually say how interesting it is to go and talk to, so openly to a community that Jane was there as well, to benefit, and hear all the competing viewpoints and the questions, and a compliment to both of the staff members that were there. They did an excellent job of engaging people genuinely without having a foregone conclusion whether it should go or not go. They did, they just did a really nice job, and I, I enjoyed the walk straight up the hill. Wish there was a trail there. And I just wanted to follow up with some testimony that we heard tonight about the use of Roundup and the problem of the knotweed. And I, it reminds me of a rock and a hard place. So, I'm very sympathetic to, as a horticulturist, that we eradicate knotweed before it becomes even more of a problem than it is. But I'm also concerned, from an environmental standpoint, about that means of eradication, using such a, what is, I believe it, a pretty toxic approach to resolving that. So, I know that that, the Parks and Recreation staff have to address that issue, but sympathetically, I understand the competing balances, but hope that city staff can, can consider alternatives to the use of Roundup in that eradication, recognizing that some jurisdictions have gone that way and some have not. But I'm persuaded that it's something we should slow down a little bit on.
Yeah, I made a note after Public Custom, we need to take a look at that. I know, as you probably do from our Parks team, that we, we do everything we can to limit pesticide use, but looking at an alternative, knotweed is a particularly difficult problem in what are alternatives there. I'm not familiar with, but we can take a look at that.
Well, I have news about the delegation of visitors from Tonon le Ban. They arrived today, and in fact, Mayor Jean Denne and his wife Francois are at my house at this moment. There's a full week of activities planned, and, yes, well out there. I doubt if they're watching. A full week of activities, lots of chances for the public to meet these folks. They'll be in the parade, riding along with Mayor Basset in the, in the parade and walking along, and there'll be a formal re-signing of the Sister City Jumelage Agreement at 11:00 at the Pergola on Saturday following the parade. So, it's 15 years of a solid friendship, and it's, it's very gratifying to see a lot of the students come back who went to Tonon le Ban maybe 10 or 12 years ago, and they have continued to revisit their host family and to have visitors from France. So, it really has taken, not just with students, but the adults as well, and so, these are friends coming back. And so, I'm hoping the community will welcome them warmly, and that you enjoy meeting them, those of you who will be coming to some of the events. Other things, I went to the SCA networking dinner on July 1st. It was very interesting. There was a panel of legislators. Some of them were really bleary-eyed because they had been up till like 3:00 or 4:00 in the morning with all the last-minute budget negotiations, but it was, it was very gratifying to see our three lawmakers, Steve Litzow and Judy Cliburn and Tanisen, speak about what got done this session. I also, just a couple of additions on the Park and Rec Committee meeting. There are two sculptures in Sculpture Garden, so you'll have to stop by and look at those. They're by artist Sean Johnson. And there's going to be a piano in the park. I got the impression it was the end of July into August for a month. There'll be a grand piano near the Pergola on the patio there at Merciedale Park for anybody to play, so that would be a fun activity, I think, for people. And there was good news about the suspension bridge, that possibly the existing foundation and anchors for the suspension bridge may be used, possibly for a new bridge. There's still lots of looking into how that might happen and where the funding might come, because it's not there at the moment, but there's a lot of community interest, especially neighbors around who were used to that bridge and that fun tension bridge. And then the Caukens Landing Project improvement will start in August, so that was good news. And that's it. Oh, and Summer Celebration starting, and pay attention to the sponsors. I really think people need to realize, we wouldn't have Summer Celebration in the form it is without the, the businesses that fork out a lot of money to support the various events. So, you know, please thank Dorothy at the Roanoke for the fireworks and the whole list of other sponsors that really make it happen. Thank you.
Very good. Most of my things have been stolen, which is just fine. Sister City visit and Summer Celebration, I think we're all set on that. Sound transit discussions, nothing new to report, and then I've got to call out to Claudia Balducci, Mayor of Bellevue, to start the next part of those conversations about getting to the, an agreement, and a motion. Actually, one other thing, at the Sound Transit Board meeting in July, I did, at the same dinner that Jane was present at, the SCA Dinner, I did talk to Fred Butler, Mayor of Issaquah, who said that she had done a nice job of teeing the whole thing up, that Claudia had done a nice job of teeing it up, not for a formal motion, but for an informal motion and an awareness that it was coming and that there was broad support for it at the June meeting. So, a motion to have Sound Transit do essentially a restart in looking at the process of negotiating with Mercer Island. So, more on that at our next meeting. Hopefully, we'll have it all wrapped up and ready to go as a motion before it goes to, by the time of our next meeting. Summarizing public comments, Councilmember Potmeyer had suggested I do that. I did talk to Mayor Dave Baker today, who suggested doing it. He said it's not easy getting started, but it's worth doing. I thought about trying it this evening, decided that I had too much on my plate to make a, make a shot at it tonight. So, consider it something I am thinking about, but didn't want to try and tackle along with all the other stuff we had going tonight.
Can I make a quick comment on that one?
Sure.
It was interesting, because I did read through the whole protocol, and I think I shared with you that in our existing procedures, the city clerk will record all citizen comments. At the next scheduled regular city council meeting, the city manager will report on such citizen comments and advise the council whether or not the matter was referred to city staff, a council, as council committee placed on a future city council meeting, or other city response, da, 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 da. And I thought that was, it was interesting, because I thought the spirit of it was, was definitely reflected in what was here, and, you know, the extent to which we need to follow this literally or not, I think that there is genuinely benefit, you know, between mayor and city manager to having that level of responsiveness. So, fortuitous of Councilmember Potmeyer to have brought it up.
Well, I, and I, quite honestly, I stalled a little bit, because Mayor Baker, in describing his process to me, quickly said that he, you know, in addition to responding to the comments, of course, he always uses people's last names, not their first names, and I kind of went, oh, okay, well, I guess I'm failing on that score. And he said, in the same way that I always wear jacket and tie, because it's just the right thing to do with the office. And I kind of, okay, well, I've fairly failed on that, that count as well.
Given the way David dresses for everything else, that's, that's almost comical.
Yes. There's a bit of an irony in that. So, anyway, I'm going to have to figure out what my style is and how to enter into this in some piecemeal fashion that works for me. But to that end, we did have a citizen and candidate ask a very pointed question, which was, I'm interested in having a discussion about a public-private partnership. Who should I talk to? And I, we didn't answer at that time, and I'm not sure what the right answer, if any, would be. And so, I put it now to the city manager or other staff, what's, what would you propose with respect to that?
Yeah, I think probably starting with, with me is, it would be a good starting point, and we'll, we'll see what the interest of potential private funders is, and we can assess from there whether it's worth additional conversations and see where it might go.
All right. So, you're comfortable, you're comfortable owning that?
Yeah, and I'll, I'll let him know that.
Okay, that'd be great.
You know, on the same vein, you've got the Al Leppard, the pickleball thing, we kind of owe him the...
Yes, and we have...
Answered before.
We, there have been, let me just say, there had been a series of meetings with that constituent and Parks staff over time on this issue, and I will ask Parks to follow up again. I'll leave it at that.
And then finally, how's it going with responding to emails as we decided we were going to at the mini-planning session? I think I saw enough traffic that it seemed as if everybody had taken it to heart initially, and I at least had a little bit of positive feedback from the folks I responded to. I've seen some nods, and I'm seeing some nods.
I had one, one that was fine, and the other one just, just ripped into me. It was just, it was just so humorous. Yes, like, it was, it was very strange, but, so, so be it.
I think we're carrying on for the moment, though, just based on the responses? And the other responder is, is up and running at this point?
Did you figure out if you could do it to both of the email addresses?
This council underscore members at Mercer Grab is not an email address. It is an alias.
Okay.
So, it's just a direction of where it should go, which goes to all your mailboxes. So, it's on the, it's on the one, and we can have a conversation about changing something.
If you just get rid of that then or something.
Well, it's a possibility. Yeah.
And then finally, as you think of sinkholes, Florida, you know, has these sinkholes that consume entire houses and cars and portions of blocks. We apparently had a sinkhole today on Mercer Island, which was one of the emails I responded to. It was apparently this big around and this deep, but nevertheless, it was there, and a citizen put a cone over it and contacted us and said, could you guys please...
Is it unread?
Yeah. So, yeah. So, anyway, that's, I think staff jumped on that and is taking care of it. Nothing else for the...
We have the member of the fire station dedication, is July 18th at 10:00 in the morning.
Proceeds our next meeting?
Yes.
Yes, right, yes. We'll get a reminder out to everyone.
Yeah. All right, very good. We are joined. Thank you all.
Who won the pool? Who won the pool?
Ooh, I think I was closer.
All right.